I have to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Here. Please rise and join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Dixon, second by Ms. Ayers, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement: It is a vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests. We have a lot of people here today, and I'm presuming that most people are probably here for our last agenda item. And so if that is the case, you'll have an opportunity to speak when we get to that item. Between now and then, we will go through our regular agenda that we have. And if there's anything that anybody's here for that is not on the agenda that they would like to address with the board, now would be your opportunity to do so. Is there anybody here who has anything that is not on the agenda that they would like to address with the board? Okay. Then we'll move on to our board members. Anything from you, Ms. Anderson?
I have nothing, no.
Ms. Ayers?
I have nothing.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing.
Ms. Kunkel?
I just want to share real quickly how appreciative I am of the PTA Summer School District and COVID School PTA. This summer is having a nice kind of social support for the Soviet's wife who's going to breast cancer. And that's on Sunday, July 4th and 7th. And I just gave you a great example of how schools can be supporting this.
And that will be at the school?
No, I believe that the fourth roll could be.
Okay. And that is this Sunday?
This Sunday, 4th to 7th, and they'll have raffle baskets and a good way to get together and also support a Soviet that I know means a lot to the students.
Thank you. Ms. Brockman?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
I have nothing, thank you.
Dr. Lewis?
I would like to say thank you to the faculty and staff who've stepped up to teach summer school this year. Summer school started today at both Hopewell Elementary School and at Pleasant Valley Junior High. And I'd just like to share a brief overview of the good work that's happening there. And then I will follow up in the fall with a formal report to the school board. This year's elementary program is serving 227 registered K-5 students from across the district. Our certified faculty and staff will provide math and reading interventions to identify the students from 8:00 to 11:30 each day through July 29th in this three-week-long period. Students will also have an opportunity to rotate through a daily intercession in PE, music, robotics, and science STEM instruction, which we remember that our clients are children, and so summer school has to be fun as well. Bussing is provided from each elementary school for students on an as-needed basis. We also have six Pleasant Valley High School service learning students who are working this summer in various capacities to support student learning, and they're just doing a marvelous job. This summer, 20 students are registered for math and/or reading interventions at Pleasant Valley Junior High. Summer school at the junior high runs mornings from July 12th through July 23rd. The goal of summer school is to practice and maintain learned skills and to avoid summer learning loss. This summer, we're grateful to be serving all students in a face-to-face model, which is especially beneficial for students who attended much of the school year online due to COVID. Thank you.
Thank you for that summary. Mr. Zimmer?
Yes. This follows along also with Pleasant Valley High School implemented a credit recovery program this summer to address some of our students that had difficulties this past year. I want to give a special thanks to the instructors, Pleasant Valley High School instructors that.
Can I stop you guys? I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. This fan kicked on, and because of it, we can't hear you, so if you can make sure you can speak in German, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. That.
So the ELA instructors were Emily Jorgensen and Bailey Tronson, the social studies instructor Jeff Myers, math instructors Kristen Opel, Nikki Pitcher, Christy Carr, Barb Fiski, and the science instructors Zach Miller, Liz Maritz, and Jessica Menti. This program was overseen by the high school administration, Jason Jones, Adam Pageant, Terry Mayerson. There were 52 students who participated in the in-person credit recovery. 10 of these students took two courses, and 48 out of the 52 or 92% of the students were successfully completed one course. There were 62 credit recovery courses attempted. 56 out of 62 or 90% of courses were successfully completed. That was 22 out of 25 for English, 9 out of 11 for social studies, 15 out of 15 for the math, and 10 out of 11 for the science courses. So this will really help our students as they head into the 21, 22 school year where they're not having to repeat courses. So very proud of the work that was done there.
Thank you very much. Ms. Damon?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Struce?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of bills. General Fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $1,709,658.41 in payment invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $2,408.55 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Ayers, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $647.41 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $15,163.67 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management Fund.
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $307,031.41 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Capital Projects Fund.
I move that capital projects fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $6,850.41 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Mr. Ayers, that the capital projects fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pepple Fund.
I move that pepple fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $18,488.19 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Anderson, that the pepple fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Debt Service Fund.
I move that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $92,564.47 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the debt service fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move that internal service fund warrants 6252 through 6255 be issued in the total amount of $55,572.49 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the internal service fund warrants 6252 through 6255 be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then Trust Fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $3,404.09 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The only thing that I had was I'm going to have Brian at our next meeting, our next couple of meetings, give us a little summary of all of our insurances that we pay for, because if you notice the management fund, we had our general liability insurance paid and our crime insurance paid and transportation insurance paid. So it's good for us to know exactly what all the insurances we have for the district and what they are all composed of. So we're going to get that summary. Now we're going to move on to old business. Transition Alliance Program Coordinator, Mr. Zimmer.
Yes, you were presented an introduction to this program at your last board meeting, and this is a continuation of our model of not for some, but for all students. The Transition Alliance Program, or TAP, began in 1998, and it's a joint project of the Community School District and the Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services. TAP provides year-round services to youth with disabilities who are eligible and actively receiving vocational rehabilitation services or pre-employment transition services. TAP develops and implements a new pattern of service to youth with disabilities. These services are provided throughout a service coordination model with the goal of obtaining competitive, integrated employment and a successful Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services for eligible youth. TAP is funded jointly by the Community School District and Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services. Each entity is responsible for 50% of the cost of the program. There is no cost to the student for their participation in TAP. TAP does not replace existing education or transition services to youth that are mandated under the IDEA Act. The services that a student receives through TAP are new and enhanced services that are not provided by the school district currently. TAP services are provided by a transition specialist that is hired specifically to work with students in the TAP program. While the school district may assign personnel who provide services covered by IDEA to provide TAP services, the school district must carefully separate and document the hours and services provided by such personnel in the TAP program. And I listed all the activities that that TAP person would be involved with. So tonight, I'm coming before you to ask for your approval to move forward with the hiring of a TAP coordinator that would, that cost would be shared with Iowa Voc Rehab. And these services would be provided to students through age 25. So it's quite an extension of the support that this district would be providing to our students with disabilities.
So this would be from 18 to 25?
Anybody have any questions regarding this? And so it's from, you said, 18 to 25?
Yes.
And right now, we only need one at this point? Or is it just a coordinator that you would hire or an existing employee that works as a TAP?
This is going to be a two-part proposal because the grant or this position is funded from October 1st through September 30th. This first proposal would take us from August 1st to September 30th, the budget I have before you. I will be coming back for the big one, which would be, okay, here's the actual October through September. We are also in conversation that if you put these services in place, we're working with them about how we provide transportation. So we've got a handicap man that we're discussing with, being able to provide that service also. And this also covers the gap that we have in that is services not provided for the months of June, July, and August. That's where we've got an area of real need that was a gap identified. And so this person would be working year-round to provide those services even during the summer.
Now, would a teacher have to recommend a student for this? Or do parents, how do students have access to this?
Within an IEP, transition is a major, major portion of that educational plan. And so as the student moves from the junior high to the high school, we're working on their academic, the reading, the writing, the math goals. But transition is also a very, very important part of how does a student transition from high school to become a contributing member of society within our community? And job placement, job employment, work experiences, job shadowing is a critical part of that transition piece. So it's actually written in the IEP, and it becomes a larger portion of the IEP as a student gets older.
Mike, can you kind of share how it aligns with kind of what we're doing right now? But this is an extension of what we're doing right now.
Yes. So currently, we have a work experience program, and we provide those services for students through the school year. Where we have identified gaps are after-school hours on the weekends. Because again, we just operate from 8:00 to 3:30 or thereabouts. But a lot of the jobs and job opportunities come in the evening or on the weekends. And that's where this coordinator position would assist with that. Once we get this up and going, the other portion of this is a job coach that would work with the student as long as they're needed at a job or act as liaison with the employer and the student as they're working through transitioning to potentially full-time employment, part-time employment, whatever that might look like. So this position would take those after-school hours, those weekend hours, and during the summer. That's where Iowa Voc Rehab identifies and goes, okay, this is a perfect partnership. That's our role, but we're short on not only funding, but personnel to do that. So a better way than to partner with the school district and share that. It is a partnership we've done with our school resource officer position, with our junior court liaison position. We see this as a great opportunity to extend our services well within our budget.
So who's in that position right now? Is that someone that the transition that you were considering?
Well, we would, a great question. We have a person right now that works in conjunction with our work experience coordinator. But she's limited to one set of students. This would expand this out much further. But we would be posting this position, with your approval, we'd be posting it tomorrow. And then with interviews to occur, hopefully have this position, this person in place, nothing going by August 1st.
Any other questions from the board?
Potentially, how many students would this person be working with?
We've identified numbers between 50 to 60 students.
Does this program only allow for one? Or let's say that you have 100 students, and could you apply for a second?
Yes. Other districts that we've looked at with this type of program in place, Davenport, for example, has three TAP coordinators. Ames has one, Cedar Rapids has three. So the proportion is relative to how many students they're serving. So the answer is yes. If our demand increases, so could the partnership.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the Transition Alliance Program and Budget as presented. Second.
Is that you, Molly? No, no. Who seconded? Oh, you didn't? Okay. A motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Dixon, that the board approve the Transition Alliance Program and Budget as presented. Roll call, both, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wadler?
Yes. Should we go to this? Okay. Okay. Now we're going to go to the 2022 legislative priorities, and I'm going to hand this over to Brian, who's going to get us started.
So with our past two board meetings, we've talked about our legislative priorities at our new August, after our August 9th board meeting. So tonight, we've had our annual invite to Representative Moore and Senator Conoyar and Representative Munzen, who are all three here tonight, to kind of walk us through what has transpired in this last legislative session and what they might see as future priorities for this coming school year that would help us finalize what our priorities work will be. As we look at what our three priorities are right now, where we've been focusing our discussion has been around, again, funding priorities with legislators in terms of the SSA being set within the first 30 days to continue to look at flexibility of how monies are allowed to be spent across the various budgets. And then really looking at, when looking at, how do we incorporate in three other areas, which we've talked about in the past, our 5% dropout at risk, where we're froze at 2.5%, which could increase up to 5% if they give us that allowability, that flexibility. The second one would be looking at the increase of special education weightings, the three levels that we have, if they would increase those to create more funding availability. And then also with the CTE funding that was passed this last year at 2.9 million, looking at, if they will continue to look at increasing that to give opportunities for students in our districts and across other districts in our area to increase our CTE capability. So those are three areas within the funding priority we want to make sure stays in the forefront. The second one would be the mental health priority, which I believe has been a priority for the last two years. The state has made great improvement in that area in terms of funding, what that can look like, both at a community level as well as a school level. And the third one would be looking at early childhood. Again, the importance of preschool, providing great opportunities for kids prior to kindergarten, what will that funding look like for both four- and five-year-olds? So those are kind of the three that we've been talking about, and we just need to solidify those by our next board meeting in the ninth, so we can get those submitted. So really, it's tonight letting the three of these kind of guide us through some conversations, what has transpired, where they see things going for '21, '22. So at that time, we'll really turn over to the three of you to kind of recap this last year, what you want to highlight, and then looking ahead to the coming year. So Representative Moore, it looks like you've been selected as the first one.
I drew the short straw.
He's the money guy.
Absolutely. Well, it's a pleasure to be here again. This is my fifth year in the Iowa legislature, and thanks to my constituents who have sent me back. Let me give you a brief rundown of what we did this year. A very productive session. This year, the House and Senate together passed 186 bills that we sent down to the governor. The House passed a total of 270 bills. The Senate passed different ones, but there were 186 bills that were passed. We've made a lot of changes, and I want you to know, some of you may know, a few years ago, Speaker Grassley appointed me chairman of the House Appropriations Committee. So virtually, my whole time in session and throughout the year is preparing a budget, watching the budget, how the money's spent, looking at taxes, looking at the whole financial picture for the state of Iowa. And I want to assure you, the state of Iowa is in great financial shape. Some of the things we did this year to change tax law, some of these you may have heard about. We doubled the income tax limit from $45,000 to $90,000 for the childcare and dependent care tax credit. We made federal COVID payments non-taxable from the state of Iowa income tax. We've started to phase out the inheritance tax in Iowa. We made food banks exempt from state sales tax. We are phasing out the mental health property tax levy. Probably read about that one. And the state will be taking that expenditure. We'll talk a little bit more about that. We're reducing income tax rates for youth as individuals from 8.5% to 6.5% and reducing corporate tax rates in Iowa. We passed this year, for the year that we're currently in, starting July 1st, an $8.1 billion budget. So where did we, where did we put money into? Where's the bulk of the money in that $8.1 billion? Well, as you probably know and would expect, 44% of that budget is K-12 education. Roughly $3.4, $3.5 billion of our $8.1 billion budget is our K-12 schools. Currently, and Brian knows this better than I do, but K-12 schools get on the average of $7,227 per student from the state of Iowa. Also, we increased funding for transportation costs. You might not think transportation costs a big deal, but take two districts. Now, I won't use Pleasant Valley because we're kind of in the middle. Take Bettendorf has very low transportation costs, and take North Scott, which has a very big rural area. And the transportation costs have to come out of their general fund. And so we're trying to equalize those funds, those expenses across the state. So no school district will pay more than the $334 average transportation cost per student. And also, half the school districts in Iowa, like Davenport, are getting a funding inequity. We've increased that inequity, reduced that inequity, $10 per student again this year. On mental health, as was talked about here earlier, as I mentioned, we're beginning the process of the state of Iowa picking up those costs instead of local property taxpayers. So we started out by spending a $50 million appropriation to fund the regions, the mental health regions this fiscal year. We've added an additional $7 million to fund new services for those needing 24-hour mental health care. Public safety was another big priority of ours. We increased funding for the Department of Corrections and Prisons by $20 million. We added eight additional million for public safety, Iowa Patrol. We spent, appropriated $100 million for broadband. We think the future of Iowa is contingent upon having internet access statewide, so we appropriated $100 million for broadband for this coming year. As I mentioned at the beginning and in my conclusion here, I'd like you to know Iowa's fiscal house is very much in order. While we spent $8.1 billion, we're not spending all available resources. We're spending 97.8% of available resources. Our cash reserve fund, our economic emergency fund, our savings accounts are full. They're required by law to be 10% of the budget, so they're, they total $810 million. We expect to have a $385 million cash balance at the end of the fiscal year. And our Iowa taxpayer relief fund should receive an additional $315 million future tax relief. None of which can be said about the state across the river. So I just want to assure you that the state of Iowa is in great financial shape. The people of Iowa do not have to worry about the state being able to afford to provide services. With that, I'll stop and let my cohorts continue and then answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, that was a great summary, so thank you for that. Thanks for letting me follow that, Norland.
So it's great to be back here. Thank you all for what you do to represent this school district and make these decisions. I know the last year hasn't been easy on you, so I just want to say thank you first of all. So I'm now in my third year in the Iowa Senate. I started out as the vice chair of education, but this year I was given a promotion, so I was the chair of the economic, or I'm sorry, the chair of the education budget, which is $1.01 billion. So I was very happy to be in charge of that budget and work with Representative Moore, who is the big chair of appropriations over in the House. But I'm really proud of this billion-dollar budget, which really went into what we can do for workforce development and education and training in the state. I left my other notes in the car, so I was trying to busily scribble down some notes here. But something I'm really proud of is that we were able to invest, we were able, Early Childhood Iowa is a great program that's certified, that you mentioned is so important to the state of Iowa. We gave them a 2.4% increase this year to match the SSA increase that was given to K-12. And I think that's important because of those are the same students that are served in K-12, and we want to make sure that their funding increases at the same level as K-12 increases. So that was $544,000 in additional dollars that Early Childhood Iowa got, which I thought was really important. Something else that we did in terms of flexibility, I believe that with 327 school districts in the state of Iowa, we all have very different needs, and we all need some flexibility by our locally-elected school board members to be able to use those to best serve the needs of our students. So anytime we can find a way to give flexibility at the local level, I try to promote that. Something that was done this year, we had some children's mental health money, just over a billion, a million dollars that was unused in that fund for children's mental health, for professional development, helping teachers get training on how to identify issues with kids to help get them help. So we gave some flexibility to the AAAs to be able to use that money in addition to professional development, but to just offer services, mental health services to those kids that need them. So, and then we also gave an increase of $2 million. Did you know that, Gary? Yeah, okay. That was something. That was something I kind of threw in as a, in my budget. So additional $2 million for services to children's mental health. And I think that we're going to continue to work on, with the AEA's, on delivering those services to kids. I think AEA's, the framework's already in the school districts. I think it makes a lot of sense that they deliver those services. So we're working very closely with the AEA's in, in how to deliver those services in the most streamlined and efficient way possible. In addition, we had a subcommittee late in the session this year that had to do with the funding formula on how we fund the AEA's that will include pre-K, because they get, they provide a lot of services right now that they don't get reimbursed for and have to absorb them other ways. So we're looking, we've got a task force, we've got, we've got the issue going with the task force. The AA people are getting together to make sure that there's equity across the state in how those, those services are charged for and how they're delivered and make sure that we can get the funding to them and so they're reimbursed for the services. Something else that happened, we increased services or funding to IJAG, which I know we don't have here in Pleasant Valley, but it's a really big, great program across the state that helps kids that have barriers to graduation. I'm sure you're considering it for Pleasant Valley. It's a great program that has a 99% graduation rate for those kids that are struggling with high absenteeism. They're not engaged in school. It gets hold of those kids, gives them some purpose and some skills so that they not only get to graduation, but have a plan beyond graduation for success. And it's just a wonderful program that I'm glad we were able to give $2.6 million more for. Included also is, we talk a lot about a teacher shortage. I know that's come up in the last couple of years that I've visited, and we were talking about it before. We knew we had a sub-s shortage, but the teacher shortage continues to be an issue across the state. And we are working with IJAG and the Department of Education to have a task force to help recruit minority teachers. Right now, the minority student population in the state is around 22 or 23%, and the minority teacher population across the state is about 4%. So that's a, that's a big difference there. And we would like to, we're, we're also working with the Department of Labor to create kind of a pre-apprenticeship to help minority students consider a career in education, to help boost those, boost those numbers. And I think that's good for all students to have that kind of diversity in the classroom. Additionally, we gave community colleges a $6.5 million increase. That's what they asked for. We gave them everything they wanted, because I think we have a lot of students that are benefiting from concurrent enrollment classes that they're taking while they're in high school. They're graduating as juniors and, you know, sophomores and juniors, and, and reducing that college debt that they could have later because they're taking advantage of these community colleges classes. I think the community colleges have also been great in terms of flexibility and their agility throughout the pandemic to meet the needs not only of our students, but also of our, our local employers who use community colleges for their workforce training. So that was a great one. And then with this, Brian, I think you mentioned the CTE, the referendum that happened through the community colleges that's going to expand our offerings for CTE, healthcare, technology across the entire eastern Iowa community college region. I think it's going to be fantastic, and we want to make sure we continue supporting that. So Gary mentioned a lot about how our fiscal house is in order. And something that I was really proud of was the fact that we were able to increase the Last Dollar Scholarship from $13 million to $23 million, a $10 million increase on dollars that can go to students that want to go on to get some sort of post-secondary training or education. It doesn't have to be a four-year college. It can be any kind of apprenticeship, military, community college, or it could be a four-year college. But we're, with, through our Future Ready Iowa program, we're really trying to encourage through career counseling, starting at the junior high and high school level, really encourage those to go on and just be lifelong learners and continue that training and education so that they can continue to be competitive in the knowledge-based economy. So, did I mention everything? Oh, I have to mention, because of Dr. Lewis being here, I did meet with Dr. Deborah Reed the other day with the Iowa Reading Research, what is it called?
Center.
Center, thank you. It's based at the University of Iowa. And they were given, we, we were able to provide an extra $250,000 for them to create a dyslexia, help me with the term, I'm sorry, dyslexia certificate?
Yes. It is, it's through the Board of Educational Examiners where you can get an endorsement.
Okay, thank you. Endorsement was the word I was looking for. So a dyslexia endorsement, so teachers can go get this dyslexia endorsement. We put $250,000 to help set that up, so, and I met with her the other day. She's just awesome, so. Anyway, so I was proud that we were able to get our kids back in school full-time safely, and I think that that's been great. Let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to bring up. I guess I'll go ahead and hand it over to Norlin at this point. But really just, I just, I guess I'll end it with the fact that we're trying to not only create lifelong learners, but we're also, we have an issue right now in the state of Iowa that we have more jobs than people. And we really want to encourage the students and the kids that we're raising in the state to stay in the state and then do what we can to attract people to the great state of Iowa. And I think we, we've done that with a really great tax reform package this year that's lowering personal income tax and a lot of other taxes. I know in the Senate, we would like to get to no state income tax if we, that's the end goal that we're looking for. But what we can do to continue to make safe communities, affordable housing, childcare. We took care of a really important childcare crisis that was really hurting people in terms of the benefits they, they get for childcare services. So whatever we can do to continually like work on the quality of life and what makes Iowa a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and that's what we're going to continue to work on in the next session. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to Norlin. So, and then we can take questions, I'm sure.
So what do you want to know about the Ag budget? No, I had been on the education committee at the Capitol, and I got moved from that, and which I always enjoyed being there because I was more in the loop than, than I am right now. But I just want to say, with Gary, at least on the House side, you don't realize how much work goes into the numbers. It is a year-long job, a lot of heated discussions in the back room, and to come out with a number at the end of the day. Now, to your priorities, it has always been a, at least a goal of mine and I know our caucus, to get to a number within 30 days. From superintendents I have had discussions with or school boards in the past, you know, we need a number so we can move on and put stuff together, you know, and we'll deal with whether it's enough or not. But more, the most important thing is to know where you're at so you can move from that point. So that's always been a goal. Some of your other priorities, whether it be preschool and things like that in our caucus, we have a lot of young members with children that is a big deal to them. They are leading the caucus in that area. So I would continue those as priorities of the school, because that is a priority of our caucus also. So it would match up real well in my mind to continue pushing for that, get kids started early. The mental health piece, and I think I brought this up a year ago. We need to make sure, I know we take moving the funding off property tax, that's a big deal. For the regions, one of my concerns, and it's a personal concern, that we've got to make sure, you know, we've got the AEA working on something, we've got the region working on something. We need to make sure we, we work together, because the, the family is still part of that piece that we don't, I mean, that's just something I see that I think would be very helpful for students, that we try and somehow work with the, the regions and see how they're working with the family. So we aren't working and pulling against each other in two different directions. So that was, like I said, the priorities you listed, I think very, match very closely with my personal priorities would be, and I believe my caucus's priorities would be in the coming year. I don't, would you agree with Gary? So, one concern I do have and is, and it's, it's probably more of a cautious attitude I've learned. I farm too, and, and so it probably comes from my background. The state and the federal government has thrown a lot of money at education this last year. And my concern is when that's pulled back due to COVID, what that'll create in spending? You know, are there schools that are using one-time money for ongoing expenses that will put programs be jerked back? I would be just, like I said, cautious of that, because that money stream will end. And I'll, I'll pretty well guarantee the state will not fulfill that at 100%. Like I said, that's just one of my concerns out there, and I try to pass that along. Make sure to keep as much of that as possible as one-time expenditures, because that is going away. Would, ready for any questions, or are we going to do it now?
Great. Do, hey, the board members have any questions for any of our legislators?
I just have one. So we, like we talked about, we've had mental health as a priority for several years, but it seems like you guys are making a lot of strides at the, at your level with mental health. So is it better for us to keep that as a priority or to focus on something else?
I think we need to continue to make it a priority. You know, we just got this funding stream in place. I mean, the, we've been trying to get it off the property taxes for so long. That was a big priority for us this year. Iowa was only one of, what, three states that used property taxes for mental health, which is not appropriate. So now that we have a sustainable stream and it has built-in increases, I think it's really important. I also think, like, when you think about just five or 10 years ago, you didn't even hear about mental health. And I think just, just people being aware of the, the services and being more willing to come forward when they do have issues, I think is going to continue to increase. And I think that we need to continue to keep that at the forefront of our minds and make sure that the, the funding is, is sustained, not only sustainable, but also meeting the needs. And, you know, it starts young, you know, I think this, this, you know, the childhood framework that we've set up is really important. And, you know, we're so blessed here in Pleasant Valley to have Vera French in our schools. Two of my own children were able to receive Vera French services in school, so they didn't have to worry about transportation, getting to appointments. And I think that we, we addressed the issues that they were having early, while they were in early elementary school. And I think it prevented a lot of issues that could have gotten much bigger later on. So I think the, the more that we can do to continue making it a K-12 or pre-K-12 priority, so that we can address and identify issues sooner, I think is important, because I think it'll save us in the long run.
And Chris has shared with that a couple of things to think about would be, he's talking about teacher shortage. There's also school-based therapist shortage as well, and that's a real concern. So for example, we talk about Vera French, we had Vera French for a number of years. In the last two years, we have not, and we've had to shift away because they didn't have enough therapists. They changed the programming. It was a great program. Now, this coming year, we have six therapists that we'll have in all of our schools, but it's a case where we had to go out and, and look for some. It's just difficult for them to find therapists. So is anything you can do to help fund that? And it also go back to when you talk about our flexible spending with that 5% dropout or at-risk funding. If we could even say, let's move from 2.5% to 3%, you know, at least let's move up. We could use that funding to help offset the cost of our therapists too. So as you talk to everybody at the state level and say, hey, take Pleasant Valley's example, they may ask for 5%, but whenever you reach 5%, we just want to get off that frozen 2.5, like other districts have the capability of doing. So if you can push that at any point, that'd be great.
Well, that bill is still alive for next year, so.
Yeah.
Brian, what would also be helpful, none of your priorities are out of line. Send us an email with those priorities, because here's how, once we're done here, and it's the same way every year. Our caucus in the House, Norlin and I, the rest of our caucus, will get together this fall to put together our legislative priority, I think it works the same way in the Senate. Where we get together and lay out our legislative priorities for next year. And if I have your email with me, I can start doing some legwork before then and at that time to get that on our priority list. All of those seem very reasonable to, to all of us. So get it to us in writing, we'll run it up the flagpole.
Yeah, in regards to the, the mental health, you need to keep the pressure up or out there, because all we did was switch the funding. But if you actually look at the mental health picture at the whole state, there are some, every region is, is taxing at a different rate, and that's going to need to be equalized in a way. And then in some places, you know, they've got core services and core plus services, and somehow there's going to have to be kind of a little bit standardization. So there's going to be massive changes going on. So the more input you have, the more you can help with that, that change. Because like I said, it is, it is, it's going to go into a blender and come out. I don't know how, I mean, because, with something.
That's actually a really good analogy.
Do you think that one of our priorities, early childhood education, is also going to, I mean, you've made some strides already, and being part of education budget, do you think that there's going to be more in the budget to put emphasis on early childhood?
Well, I, I hope so. You know, they came to us this year, or they came to me in the Senate, and I'm sure they came to Representative Kerr as well. And I think their idea to have, have the SSA increase similar to K-12 was a really great idea. And when we, when we gave it to them, they were really pleasantly surprised. I don't think they expected us to do it. But, you know, this is what, this is why it's good that we have, we're in a good fiscal position in the state right now, because we have the, the funds available and we can give increases to programs that we know are working. So I, I, yeah, I think it's a good priority. And, you know, we've, we've got to make sure kids are ready for kindergarten. You know, I mean, it's, we know, you know, from the reading research, that if they're not reading at grade level by third grade, they're going to just continue to fall behind. And we want to make sure, if they're ready for kindergarten, that they're going to be set up for success.
Great. Other questions from the board? One of the, the bills that was passed was House File 813, which talked about charter schools, and that did get passed. I know that there was some controversy over that, and that wasn't much interest in it. So can you give us some conversations regarding that House File, Bill 813? And what were the conversations regarding that and why it was passed, or, and the reasons behind that?
Well, I think, I mean, I'll start, but, you know, one of the big priorities today or this year, I think, was school choice. You know, there was charter schools, there was talk about vouchers, there were, I shouldn't say, what are they, educational savings council slash vouchers, whatever you want to call them. And then also the diversity plan, allowing students to open and roll out of those five districts that weren't allowing it. So I think giving parents a choice, I think, was kind of the theme of the legislature this year. So, you know, when I look at, you know, specifically the voucher bill, it was very early defined this year. It was just for the students that attend those schools that are on the failing list, the federal failing list, or Every Student Succeeds Act list. So, you know, we're lucky here in Pleasant Valley that we don't have any schools on that list, but there are communities out there that do have schools on that list. And, you know, I felt that it was important to give those parents a chance to get those kids into schools that can better meet their needs. As far as the charter schools, that was something, again, that if, if a group of parents or a community wanted to come together and create another option for their kids, they have the option of doing that. But, you know, it, to me, it's about giving people choices to make sure that their, the kids' needs are met. So y'all want to, it was a House file, so.
There were a lot of issues this year dealing with school choice. And I was one of two Republicans that voted against the charter school bill. And I want to explain my thinking. Also discussed this year was the diversity, 10 school districts in Iowa, I think it's 10, that are limited, Davenport being one of them. Parents, their children in the Davenport School District are not allowed to open and roll out to other school districts without the permission of the school district. That's not true in Pleasant Valley, Bettendorf, North Scott. And so I voted to allow parents in the Davenport School District, just like all of us have the opportunity to open and roll, to give parents more of a school choice. I didn't think it was fair to discriminate against Davenport kids and Davenport parents. And so I thought, knowing our district, that gives every kid, and I'll use my kids as an example, if they had chosen, they could open and roll, they live in Pleasant Valley, but they could open and roll Bettendorf, North Scott, Davenport North, Davenport Central. They also have the right to go to, another one in Davenport, West. They also have the right to go to Assumption. They also have the right to go to Elementary School, St. Catherine, St. Marks. They can be homeschooled, there's all kinds of choice. So when the charter school bill came up, and again, this is me living in this community, my thinking was, okay, we've given the Davenport students options they've ever had. They can go to any one now of eight high schools in our metropolitan area. They didn't have that right before. When it come to the charter schools, I thought, the, the logic of charter schools was to allow parents to go off and set up another school and take the $7,200 I mentioned. That would go with that student to create essentially a ninth high school in the city metropolitan area. That I didn't think was fair. So I wanted to explain why I voted the way I did. I'm all in favor of school choice and parents' decisions. But again, now we have parents, every parent has a choice of eight high schools, home schools, private schools. We have wonderful school choice in this area. But I wasn't in favor of diverting school dollars to create a ninth high school But I wasn't in favor of diverting school dollars to create a ninth high school. That's, I wanted to explain the history of it and why I voted the way I did.
Geez, John, you can tag in. I voted in favor of it. There is a, and I'll tell you why, and I can, I can take everybody in this room on a field trip. There is a school district within driving distance here that 360 students open and roll out. And right on the edge of this school district, there is a parking lot. And you ought to see the mass conglomeration of buses from the neighboring school district and the parents. It is, I mean, if you're trying to go down through there, it's a nightmare. So these parents are making a choice to move their children out. So if they were up, in my opinion, there's something, and why are they moving? Or why are they taking that extra effort to take their kids to the edge of the district so they can get on a bus to go to another district? And why isn't the original district addressing that problem? And I've had that discussion with them, and they have not come up with an answer for me. So these parents are giving their kids a choice. And so in my mind, how many other parents in that district aren't able to make that, you know, take their kids to the edge of town so that they can get on a bus to go to another district for some reason? And so if these parents of these 360 kids got together, would they create their own school within the district? To me, you know, it's, those parents have the opportunity to make a choice. There are other parents that are not. And Chris talked about, we're going to say voucher, but that wasn't the program. I ran into a gentleman at the vending machines at the Capitol when we were going through that discussion. And I have a tendency to talk to people. And he was a single parent with kids, and his kids were in one of those schools. And he said, "My kids are trapped, and I don't have the means to get them out." I mean, and like Chris said, we don't, the school, we can't, we can't make a bad choice around here going to school, I don't think. But here was a gentleman, I guess, I felt terrible. I mean, like I said, we had a very open discussion, and he just, I mean, I, he goes, "My kids are trapped and I can't help them." And he was just at a loss, so, you know, that's kind of some of the things, you know, I work through in my mind, you know, plus any emails I get from you or just anybody else. But, you know, there was a gentleman I wished I could have brought to the chamber and had him speak because he was, he had a point of, that no one else had, that I could not really put into words.
Any other questions from the board? I just have one more, and actually, it's kind of a, it's a question that anyone, you can comment on. You know, this has been a very challenging year for all school boards across the whole country, including this area. I mean, Chris, you were on this board not very long ago, and you see how many people are coming to these school board meetings now. And this has been a challenging year. So if you each could tell us what you think Pleasant Valley, the administration, the school board, our staff, what are the couple of things that we've done that you think have been really good in the last 15 months? And what are a couple of things that we haven't done so well that you would like to see improvement on? Especially with the challenging times that we're in.
Well, I can't limit it to the last 15 months. But, and I think I've told this to Brian, I used to tell this to Jim Spellog, and I'll tell it to everybody in this room and anybody in this community. The testament to the Pleasant Valley School Board is Jane and I had four sons. My oldest son is a medical doctor at the University of Iowa with a mechanical engineering degree from Iowa State and a medical degree from Iowa. My second son is a certified public accountant. My third son is a physics and high school teacher. My youngest son is an actuary. All four boys were graduates of Pleasant Valley School District. Yes, parenting had something to do with that, but it's you, the school board, the administrators of Pleasant Valley, the teachers of Pleasant Valley, that made that possible. And I can get emotional. That's what you guys have done for young people. And I thank you for my family. That's the most important thing to me.
I mean, okay, so since I was on the board for, what, just over five years? And then I have a different perspective at the state level. I mean, I, people know about Pleasant Valley all over the state, and you don't see us in the paper for a bunch of nonsense. I mean, there's a lot of nonsense that goes on around the state and around the country. But, you know, and I mentioned this to Brian the other day. I mean, when you sit around the board table, every conversation starts out with, is this good for kids? I mean, that's what drives all your decisions. And did you, do you still read the vision statement at the beginning of every meeting? I think that vision statement is absolutely spectacular. It's not for one kid, it's for all kids, and it's to be the best in all things, not just some things. And I think, you know, you can see the number of teams and, that we have going to the state level and, you know, academic accomplishments and our fine arts program. I'm just, you know, so proud to say that we have the largest high school marching band in the state. And I just think that we're doing great things over here. And, you know, when Walke was up at the Capitol this year and they were bragging about all their state titles, you know, they beat Pleasant Valley to get to that state title. And I said, "But what are you paying for property taxes?" Because I guess it's not, I bet it's not what we're paying in Pleasant Valley. And it's not, it's several dollars more per thousand. So I think we get a lot of bang for our buck over here, and I think it's because of good leadership. And it's a caring community, and it's teachers that care about every, the growth of every kid every day in the classroom, and it's about leadership here around the board and in the administration level. So it's been going on for years and years, you know, since Jim Spellog and since the leadership of Dale Barber. And I just think that it's carried through. There's just a really nice culture and environment here. And if you would have asked me what my kids were going to do in high school and after high school 10 years ago, I would have been completely wrong because they were exposed to things here that I'm not sure they would have been exposed to in other places. So I'm really proud of that.
I get to clean up here.
Yeah, you do.
I didn't have any kids go to PB. But I think what both Gary and Chris said, we don't, we don't hear the clatter or the noise. I think you're very receptive to the parents, at least as I think, I don't know. You guys got to answer that. I spent 45 minutes prior to getting here concerning another school board issue with parents on the phone. And the surprise that these parents think the school board has given them the middle finger. Won't listen to them, basically shutting them off, won't have a discussion. And they're calling me to find out what I can do through the state. I mean, they just, and, and I think they, I mean, that's where you got to, you know, I think it's where you're, that school board has already created a barrier. I don't know how they're going to get over it. But you listen and don't allow that to happen, I would, I mean, that's what I think, as an outsider. And I've always been welcomed here, being an outsider, too, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
Anything that we can improve upon?
Well, I mean, just thinking about what you've gone through over the last year. I mean, there's just been constant, you know, every time you've set up for a field goal, it, you know, it feels like they're moving the goalposts, you know, because you're constantly getting new data, you're getting new guidelines, you're getting new feedback. And I know we were all wondering, are our kids going to go back to school full-time or half-time or online? And there just were questions the whole year, and I think you've shown remarkable resiliency. And, you know, I love the community engagement here because, you know, when I was on the board, the only time people would come is if their kids were getting recognized for something, it seemed like. But it's great that the community is involved and people are really paying attention, and I think that's great. And, you know, these are some tough issues that we're dealing with right now. And, you know, with what's being in the curriculum, and I know we're going to bring that up later, but just the pandemic and how we're going to get our kids caught up for the achievement gap. And it's been a really difficult year. And, you know, I used to tell people, we don't just come here every two weeks to try to piss everyone off. I mean, it's really, there's really a lot of information that goes into the decisions that are made around this board table. And, you know, it takes a lot of thought and effort, and it takes a lot of data collection and analyzing that data and really making sure, you go back to that statement, is it good for kids? So I think that's really special.
Great. Anything else for anybody? Okay, then we can go on to the next slide.
I just want to say to the three of you, thank you very much for all you do. I mean, I know you spend a lot of time, there are a lot of decisions. I always appreciate your openness when we call you, email you. It is very appreciated to keep us informed and to transpire at state level throughout that time, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, and new business, Juvenile Court Services Liaison Office, Mr. Zimmer and Kelly Furmer.
Well, it has been a goal of mine to make sure that our direct service providers, you can actually see in person. And so the last two board meetings, you had the opportunity to hear from our school resource officers. I think that very, her position is very important. You've also heard from our students on the discipline reports and that kind of stuff. And today, we managed to, Ms. Furmer, between travels.
Yes.
And Kelly Furmer is our juvenile court liaison. And as I mentioned before, that is her position this year with juvenile court and Pleasant Valley.
Hi, thank you for having me. So just to give you a quick overview of kind of what I do, my first high school, my 19th school year that I've been at Pleasant Valley. And my position works with our students and also any students who's on probation. So I would say, since I started and working back with Mike, you know, the trend has really become to keep kids out of the system. And, you know, I think back in the days when a kid would do something criminally, we would charge them, and that's just what we did. That was kind of how we handled things. And really, the trend has been to move away from that. And we've been really lucky in our district that we have great school resource officers who are willing to look at diversion options for kids instead of charging them and sending them, excuse me, into the system. So we've been utilizing that probably for the last several years. And those things can entail community service, providing kids to counseling, trying to think some of our other things that we've utilized in the past.
Restitution.
Restitution, yep. And so that's really kind of the trend that we're going. And so Jamie and I at the high school, or Pete at the junior high, we will sit down and talk about what the charge is and kind of how we want to handle it. We always meet with the parents and we kind of lay out, this is what we're planning on doing. So instead of charging you, if you complete this, you know, alternative option for you, there'll be no charge. And parents are always very, very receptive to that. And, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. Sometimes we meet with the family and we realize, okay, we were going to give this kid 12 hours of community service, and we realize there's all these other things going on in the home. And so instead of doing that, maybe they're going to participate in counseling. So we really try to meet with the families, see where they're at, and go from there. So that's kind of how things work. I get kids, I work with our flex student kids, I get kids who are in ASH. Some kids just self-report. Obviously, the numbers were lower this year because my room is small and I can only have four students in my room at the time, so. That's kind of a general overview. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Kelly, can you share what ASH stands for so that they know?
Academic Study Home. So students, if they have a study hall and they're failing classes, they're assigned to academic study halls, I mean, they're regular study home.
Did your overall caseload, you sent 22 students, was it the same, like, less or more?
It's less. And, you know, I would say, that doesn't mean that was only 22 students that I worked with. When I do my report for the state, you have to have pre- and post-data. And so those were the students that I actually had pre- and post-data on. You know, sometimes kids were 100% online first semester, and then they came back second semester. We weren't really taking attendance, so I didn't have a pre-attendance for those kids. So it wasn't necessarily that those were the only students I worked with.
It seems that it was working very well because you're doing an effective job because out of the 22 students, nobody had any further violations at all. So obviously, you've done a good job with connecting with them, and so hopefully heading them in the right direction.
Yeah, and I can't think of one student in all the years that we've done this that has not, you know, completed whatever it was that we required of them. And I can't think of any family that has said, "No, I don't want to do that." So we really have done a good job, I think, of keeping kids out.
Thank you for that.
I'd say Kelly's being very humble. A lot of what her success is based on her relationship she builds with kids. When a situation arises, she sits down with the team and says, "What can we do to help this child?" And it's, you watch her, wish interacts with kids, it is the right way to handle with students. And just treats them with respect, maturity, and they respond to that. And her success rate is phenomenal because of that, so thank you.
And if there's home visits, it's usually a counselor, that's Furmer. Might be administrator, that's Furmer. Usually, they always go in pairs, and he's usually the second person there for our happiness.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions from the board, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the Juvenile Court Services Liaison 2021 for 2020, 2021 report as presented. Second?
Motion, Mrs. Dixon, second by Ms. Hoskins. Set the board to approve the Juvenile Court Services Liaison 2020, 2021 report as presented. All votes please, Mr. Taman.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Concall?
Yes.
Dr. Walke?
Yes. Our next item on the agenda is the 2021, 2022 proposed fee increase for credit debit card payments that we received. Mr. Strus, you want to give us a little summary on that?
You bet. My cleans was unable to be here tonight, but I will walk you through what this involves. As all you know, we have our Infinite Campus system. You also probably know RevTrack. RevTrack is what a lot of times people will pay their school lunch through. Well, that is connected. RevTrack is a separate entity, a program that we purchased, a company that sends the money through to Infinite Campus. This coming year, Infinite Campus is running the program themselves, and therefore, we can no longer use RevTrack at some point this year. So what is happening, as we anticipate this is going to occur around January, is that they have been telling us. When you look at what's going to happen, there's also going to be a 35 cent increase for a credit card usage for every time you use your credit card, say, to purchase your lunch, since they have $100, it's going to cost you 35 more cents to do that. Well, part of what we're looking at with that is, knowing it's not going to happen until potentially January, instead of jumping to 35 cents right away when it occurs, what we're looking at doing is saying, "Let's go 15 cents to start the year." And what we'll do then is keep it at 15 cents. And in January, when we hit it, we'll keep it at 15 cents for the rest of the year. So basically, and then we've occurred, occurred in the front half, will help offset. It won't offset everything when it makes the switch. But then next year, when we start school, we jump it up another 20 cents to finally get to that 35 cents. So it's, for our families, it's not jumping into 35 cents right away. It's building in a system from 15 cents to 20 cents, and then it would stay the same after that point. But that allows us to switch from not using RevTrack to Payrex, which is what Infinite Campus is using. We've tried to look for other options, and with Infinite Campus student system, there's just nothing else we can do at this time. So that is what this proposal is for, is to go ahead and increase 15 cents, keep it 15 cents all year, then the following year, '22, '23, increase another 20 cents to get to the 35 cent limit at that point. So take any questions you have.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but do you find that more people are using the credit card option than they used to in the past? Or do people still send in checks like they, do we know?
It's a great question. I could ask Andrew for those numbers. My assumption is more people are using the credit card just because it's easier. A lot of times, kids will call home and say, "Hey, I'm out of money." Parents can very easily sometimes put more money in there at that point. So I would assume more are using it.
Are there any discussions? I don't know if any school districts are doing this, but nowadays, when you are with friends and stuff and you want to pay them, you can use Venmo or PayPal, things like that. Is there any, any schools that's using anything like that where you may not be paying this extra cost, but you can still get the money into an account?
Not to my knowledge. Because it has to run through, into that Infinite Campus, is where it has to get deposited. And so that's the, I'm not going to get it right, the technology side of it. That's how they're bringing it in, is through that program. And I don't think Venmo would be able to put it into Infinite Campus for our kids.
It would have to come into our bank account.
Correct.
I read this, and it is the way of the world. I mean, there's a new federal law, when we were in Chicago, like, three restaurants charged us the fee, three others didn't. So it's the way of the world these days. But yeah, outside the box thinking, because I know, like, every bank is coming up with its own
Right.
pay-by member, but it could probably also increase our chances of getting hacked when our accounts are out there, too. So it's probably a necessary evil to keep us safe.
Right.
We used Venmo for the after-palm.
You did?
Event.
Okay.
It worked for the event. However, we did have issues with too much money getting collected in there, and they basically discouraged us from using Venmo for that type of application. So I think it's not really built for that type of payment system. So, I think it's not really built for that type of payment system. And, you know, through RevTrack, I mean, people are paying for summer camps. They're paying for, you know, not only just lunch, but all the other things that come up for school payments. So, it'd be hard to kind of keep that stuff, but I'm sure.
Great. Okay. Any other questions from the board? If not, I will take a motion.
I move that we increase the fee transactions for credit card payments received by Pleasant Valley Community School District from $2.50 per transaction to $2.65 per transaction effective immediately. Back now.
Motion, Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that we increase the fee per transaction for credit debit card payments received by Pleasant Valley Community School District from $2.50 per transaction to $2.65 per transaction effective immediately. Roll call, please, Ms. Taman.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Ms. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Dr. Wabler.
Yes. Okay. Our last item on the agenda is the 2021 Legislative Session Equity Inclusion and Free Speech. Also, this is related to House File Bill 802. Here's how it's going to work. Mr. Struce is going to give us a little summary on equity inclusion, free speech, the guidance that the DE has given us. And after he gives us a little summary of this, then he will take questions from the board. After the board is done asking their questions, then we will go to the public. As done in previous meetings, anybody who wants to come up, comes up to the podium, they're going to give their name, state their capacity within the district, and then they will get three minutes to address the board on this topic. They get one chance to address the board, and it is three minutes of time. And we will take all of your comments into consideration, but you will not be engaging the board, so we will not be answering questions. After that is done, and everybody has spoken and gotten their three minutes on those who want to speak, then we will ask the legislators if they have any comments or questions that they want to make, anybody from the board if they want to make anything, and then we will conclude the meeting. And so, with that, when you do come in and speak, again, I expect us to be respectful. I expect people to behave properly. And if you are not behaving properly, I will ask that you stop that behavior. And if you don't, then you will be removed from this meeting. So, I expect everybody to be respectful of everybody else and their opinions. With that, Mr. Struce, why don't you go ahead?
Thanks, Dr. Wabler. And thanks to everyone who came out tonight. You know, when you look up here, 2021 Legislative Session Equity Inclusion and Free Speech, last time we had our last board meeting, we talked about we were waiting for the guidance from the DE, which came out July 2nd. And this is the title that they had used when going through that. So, just kind of borrowed that for tonight. You know, going through, I think it's, all of us have a very strong passion for our kids. There's no doubt about it. We want our kids to be successful when they leave here. You know, as Chris mentioned earlier, she's spot on in terms of our number one goal is our kids. And I want to start, before we get to all the things that we're going to talk about tonight, I want to start with this screen for the following reason. On the left-hand side, you see a symbol that we have in our Conference of School Improvement Action Plan. Within that are the skills that we want our students to leave, whether it's grade level to grade level, or to leave Pleasant Valley with. We believe if students have that skill set, they can be successful in life, whether that's a career, whether that's college, whether that's being a citizen. When you look at our actual five-year action plan, on the screen, there are five different steps that we have, or the five areas that we focus on. The number one is always the most important, is universal instruction for all of our kids, PK through 12. And that's all content areas, all classes that we teach. And when you look at that, I pulled three parts of that action plan out. Again, there's more steps to this, as there are with 2 through 5. But I think when you look at this, lining up the left-hand side, those are skills that we want, as I mentioned, with our kids leaving our district. Number two up there, or letter B, we want to make sure that we strengthen relationships between instruction and learning to allow students to develop higher-order thinking, demonstrate complex understanding, and engage in work that has meaning and value beyond school. That is something we teach our kids in our classroom, whether they're in kindergarten through 12th grade, is where does this learning take them? And how do you apply what they're learning in the classroom to be successful and to see those connections? And the third one, students collaboratively engage in productive thinking and purposeful discourse. Again, a critical skill for our kids, when they're sitting in a classroom, and you can walk in a PK classroom or a kindergarten classroom, and you can see kids collaborating with each other. They're sitting in pods, having discourse along, and we teach our kids how to do that. Our teachers have gone through years of training to make that happen, how to ask the right questions of our kids to get them thinking at a higher level, whether it's habits of mind, or habits of interaction, or the things that we talk about all the time. 2 through 5 up there, again, looking at our support system for all PK through 12 kids. Mike talked about earlier tonight with special education, a program we're starting there called TAL. To whatever we ask of our kids, every program we offer, we are asking ourselves, how do we give the best support to our kids in our district? Analyzing, assessing data, and to making informed decisions, and that's everything. That's from a classroom to here at our table, in our office here, whenever we're making decisions, how are we making the best informed decisions that we can? Increasing leadership in all individuals, that's kids in the classroom leadership, that teachers going on to be leaders within our own district, or people moving on to be leaders. We want our kids, our staff, to be leaders for us. And then, finally, advancing infrastructure to improving the learning environment. Again, as we continue to grow, those are things that we are always looking at. How do we increase our infrastructure, make sure we have quality learning spaces for our kids? All of that, when I say that, it's about our kids. And what are we doing to make sure we're having the best opportunities for them all the way through? And our goal statement, if you don't know it, it's listed on the bottom. And that is one of the things we ask every one of our beginning teachers. In less than a month, when they come on board, they have to know that, and they will learn that and memorize that. That is who we are, as Chris mentioned earlier tonight. That has been who we are and will continue to be. It is number one in every program possible for all kids, not just for some. Whether that is on a football field, in a band room, in a classroom, whatever it is, are we giving our kids the best opportunities? That is critical to who we are. With that, over the last month, in the last couple of board meetings, there has been concern about American literature in a class that took place. And what I want to do is I want to set the stage to you as to what this looks like and where it lands with thinking, what I just shared with you now, where it lands with one of our board policies, and where it lands with House File 802, because that has been a question. When you look at this American Lit class, this is an activity that was taking place one day in class. It was an activity around editorial cartoons. I first mentioned the two books. The unit itself had to do with the American Dream, the American Creed, and Modernization. These are the two books that they read during that class, or at least excerpts of that, of those books. I also put in here, every time we teach lessons, and we tell this to our teachers, and we can always get better at it, but it's always saying, every lesson we teach, what standard is it aligned to? What is the expectation of learning for the kids in that class, that day, that unit, whatever it might be? On the screen right now, you see two. ELA stands for English Literature, Language Arts. Literacy. SL stands for Speaking and Listening. And then, that's 1112 is the grade level that this would be typically for, so 1112. And then, 1C is the standard breakdown. I know there's a lot of words in the screen, but I'll kind of read those to you so you can process that as I go through it. But these are two expectations that were in this class lesson that day. The idea was to propel conversation by posing and responding to questions that probe reasoning and evidence. Ensure a hearing for a full range of positions on a topic or issue. Clarify, verify, or challenge ideas and conclusions, and promote divergent and creative perspectives. The second standard, respond thoughtfully to diverse perspectives. Synthesize comments, claims, and evidence made on all sides of an issue. Resolve contradictions when possible, and determine what additional information or research is required to deepen the investigation or complete task. So, you take those two standards and think about the screen I had previously. It really does promote the discourse within the classroom of trying to get kids to think and work through that. The editorial cartoons. Here would be exactly what transpired in that class that day, to walk you through what the expectation of the class was and the directions that were given. You'll be analyzing cartoons in pairs, or in a group of three or alone, if you prefer. You have a copy of the slides. Please put a response as comments on each slide. Each cartoon relates to the American Dream, and there were six of them, and provides a unique angle or perspective on the American Dream. In order to complete, or in order to analyze each cartoon's perspective, you will complete this three-step process. And here are the directions that were given. First, observe the cartoon and all of its details. The title, any text in the cartoon, the images, the design, et cetera. What do you see and describe it? So, again, this is the teacher giving this information to the students in the class. Don't miss any important details. Cartoons can be complicated, and if you miss one little thing, you might miss the whole message. Then, critically think about what all these details might mean or suggest. The cartoonist made deliberate choices in order to represent the issue in a certain way. The question posed to students would be, what is the cartoon's perspective or message about the American Dream, asking them to explain it? Last but not least, respond to the cartoon. Do you agree or disagree with the message of the cartoon? Again, I say cartoon, there were six of them, so responding to all six. How do these cartoons change, influence, or reinforce your perspective on the American Dream? Your group does not have to come to a consensus on a response. You all have your own individual responses. So, that was the introduction to the activity that the kids did that day in the classroom. Now, this occurred back mid-February-ish, depending on the class you were in. But, so this is before House File 802 came into place. Why do I bring that up? We have a board policy, current board policy that we have in place. It's 603.6. It's also referenced off of Iowa School Board Association's 603.9R. And it is the same board policy that they would give us as their reference or their resource. Now, it was called, it is called, a controversial issue. So, it's discussing controversial issues, that's the policy. When you look at our policy, what it states is the following. Controversial issue is defined as an area of significant academic inquiry by which substantial segments of the citizens of this community, state, or nation hold sincere conflicting points of view. That's the introduction to that board policy. Then, there are these points that follow that kind of guide the thinking and the conversation that our teachers have in the classroom, and the guide rails of the latitude that they would have in a class when talking about controversial issues. It is the belief of this school board that controversial issues should be fairly presented in a spirit of honest academic freedom, to the end that individual students may recognize the validity of other points of view, but can learn to formulate their own opinions based upon dispassionate, objective, unbiased study, and the discussion of factual basis underlying the controversy. That's one of the points. A second point. It shall be the responsibility of the instructor to present fully and fairly the opportunity and the means for students to study, consider, and discuss all sides of controversial issues, including but not limited to political philosophies. Couple more. It shall be the responsibility of the instructor to protect the right of the student to study pertinent controversial issues within limits of good taste, allowing the expression of their personal opinions without jeopardizing their relationships with their instructor or school. The next one. It shall be the responsibility of the instructor to refrain from advocating partisan causes, secretarian religious views, or selfish propaganda of any kind through any classroom, which is a discussion or school device. However, an instructor shall not be prohibited from expressing a personal opinion as long as a student is encouraged to reach his or own decision independently. The last one. It shall be the policy of the school system with respect to controversial issues to encourage instructors to lead full discussions, thereof, in a spirit of academic freedom, to the end that the student may learn that he or she has the right to disagree with the opinion of others, but he or she is responsible to base his disagreement upon fact, and at the same time, respect the right of another to hold a conflicting opinion. So, as I go through that, that currently is what our policy is, as I said, phrased off of the Iowa School Board policy around having those discussions in a classroom and creating the academic freedom in that regards. Now, I bring that up because House File 802, which came out, and the guidance that came out from the DE here on July 2nd, so last Friday, would insist that this was released. So, I'll go through and kind of explain to you, as we waited for that guidance we shared last time, once we had the information, we'd bring it forth, which we're doing tonight. This will talk about the law itself, but also some additional guidance that the DE has provided for us. First of all, what the law requires. The law requires that any curriculum or mandatory staff or student training provided by an employee of the district, or by a contracted hired, or contractor hired by the school district, does not teach, advocate, encourage, promote, or act upon specific stereotyping and scapegoating toward others on the basis of demographic group membership or identity. So, that's kind of the premise of which we are working around moving forward. Within that definition, I want to pull up two things, because you might ask, what is race or sex scapegoating or stereotyping? And I think it's important that we have that definition as we move forward. So, first of all, from the scapegoating side, note what it states. It talks about assigning fault, blame, or bias to a race or sex, or to members of a race or sex because of their race or sex, or claiming that consciously or unconsciously, and by the virtue of person's race or sex, members of any race are inherently racist or inherently inclined to oppress others. So, I'd really say there, the first couple lines, assigning fault, blame, or bias. And then, at the end, there, the other piece, there would be inherently racist or inherently inclined to oppress others. That's kind of what I would work for from the scapegoating standpoint. Stereotyping. Ascribing character traits, values, moral, and ethical codes, privileges, status, or beliefs to a race or sex, or to an individual because of their individual's race or sex. So, those two definitions come straight from, if you've looked at House File 802, they're listed, and it's also part of the DE guidance there. So, here's what the guidance came out with in a general review. And part of this is also part of the House File 802. So, I'll go through a few of these points, and then we'll bring closure to it. Diversity and inclusion efforts shall discourage students from discriminating against others by political ideology or a characteristic protected under the Federal Civil Rights Act. So, that is looking at from a student's standpoint. The second one transitions it to employees. Prohibits employees from discriminating against students or employees by a political ideology or a characteristic protected underneath the Civil Rights Act. The third one, the district may continue training that fosters a workplace and learning environment that is respectful of all employees and students. So, that is, as I said earlier, can continue in that regard. Now, if you've read the House File, there are also 10 things which I will call prohibited. I mean, they're identified as specific defined concepts, which, again, that's just the terminology that they use. But really, there are 10 prohibited actions that we will make sure that, as we train our staff and go through this with them, that these will be things that we are points of emphasis that must be brought out. The first one, that one race or sex is inherently superior to another race or sex. That the United States and State of Iowa are fundamentally or systematically racist or sexist. That an individual, solely based of an individual's race or sex, is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. Again, that goes back to scapegoating and stereotyping. That an individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of the individual's race or sex. That members of one race or sex cannot and should not attempt to treat others with respect to race or sex. And the last five here are this. That an individual's moral character is necessarily determined by an individual's race or sex. That an individual, by virtue of the individual's race or sex, bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the same race or sex. That an individual should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological stress on account of that individual's race or sex. Nine, that meritocracy or traits such as hard work ethic are racist or sexist, or were created by a particular race to oppress another race. In any form of race or sex scapegoating or stereotyping that we have listed, that's- that's the 10th one. So again, a lot of those are things we've talked about previously that are in the file, and here's where the DE came back with guidance on three of them. They talked about two, seven, and 10 a little bit further. Number two had to do with the United States and Iowa being fundamentally or systematically racist or sexist. So they stated, "It would not implicate this concept to mention actual or purported racist or sexist policies implemented in the United States or Iowa so long as the United States or Iowa is not described as fundamentally or systematically racist or sexist." Seven, they said to go back with that an individual bears responsibility for action committed in the past. Again, this provision does not bar discussions of how to redress the effects of past discrimination, but this section is implicated only if individuals are asked to bear responsibility based on their race or sex for past discrimination that they did not commit. And being asked, again, that'd be from the adult perspective to the child. I mean, that's really what we're looking at there, because students will have those dialogues back and forth. Number 10, the last one that they put additional clarification on, "Any form of race or sex scapegoating or stereotyping." Within this provision, the emotions of discomfort, guilt, or anguish may be rational responses to disclosure or discussions of oppression. This section does not require elimination or emotional discussions. What it does require is that trainings or curriculum not assign blame or imply individuals ought to feel pain based upon their race or sex. So when having those discussions, what does that look like moving forward? Again, there are three things that I would say. These, I'm going to put these as the permissible actions that you would talk about at this point. Districts are allowed to continue diversity, equity, inclusion training for students and staff. Districts are able to promote racial, cultural, ethnic, intellectual, or academic diversity or inclusiveness, provided such efforts are consistent with the provisions of this section. So take everything we've talked about in this House File, as long as you're following those, you're within the parameters of what you can do. House File 802 provides, "It shall not be construed to prohibit the use of curriculum that teaches the topics of sexism, slavery, racial oppression, racial segregation, or racial discrimination, including the topics related to the enactment and enforcement of laws resulting in those areas. It allows for a robust discussion of causes and consequences of racism, sexism, and oppression." So again, those conversations are there, but what does it look like and how you're having those conversations? The last piece that they mentioned in their House File 802 is to be construed consistent with the First Amendment. House File 802 provides that it shall not be construed to inhibit or violate the First Amendment rights of students or faculty, or undermine a district's duty to protect to the fullest degree intellectual freedom and free expression. The intellectual viability of students and faculty shall not be infringed upon in this section. Now, let's take that one step further and ask, what does intellectual freedom mean in this context? So the DE went further and explained this under the First Amendment component. The DE shared, "Intellectual freedom or academic freedom is, as a concept, expressly linked to the First Amendment Free Speech Clause." And this comes from the 1967 court case from Justin William Brennan. And this is what he stated in that court case, that now academic freedom is based off of. "Our nation is deeply committed to safeguarding academic freedom, which is of transcendent value to all of us and not merely to teachers concerned. That freedom is therefore a special concern of the First Amendment, which does not tolerate laws that cast a pall of orthodoxy over the classroom. The vigilant protection of constitutional freedoms is nowhere more vital than in the community of American schools. The classroom is peculiarly the marketplace of ideas. The nation's future depends upon leaders trained through wide exposure to the robust exchange of ideas, which discovers truth out of a multitude of tongues rather than through a kind of authoritative section or selection." So, when you take those things and you look at where we stand with our five-year plan and what our skills we want our kids to have, you look at our board policy with controversial issues, you take House File 802, you take all those things put together, and you look at the parameters, what we can or cannot do, and those are all things that we will continue to talk about and move forward, because, like I said, in June, this was released for us to continue. This is new to our staff, who will be coming back in the fall. So our next steps as a district, and I put up here, for example, and this is kind of a timeline to let you know, what does this mean to us? I mean, this is not something we take lightly, and we'll make sure that our teachers are set up for success in everything that they do. Number one, in July, and I put July because we already are having small teen discussions. For example, Mr. Zimmer, Dr. Lewis are working with small groups of people doing curriculum writing. So this is a perfect time to have these conversations when they write their curriculum about what this looks like. Tomorrow, actually, Mike, Sidney, and myself are having a webinar, a national webinar around this topic, to help us get a clear picture again of what this can look like for when we teach our staff. To determine, the Iowa School Board is developing a training session on House File 802. It is not completed, but once that's completed, we'll definitely look at that as another training opportunity. And the DE is currently working on a First Amendment training for their equity coordinators for all the districts, and that's currently being put together as well, so we'll follow that when that comes out. August 2nd, we come back together with all of our administrators. That's our big administrative kickoff, which we will go through the same PowerPoint presentation with all of them so that they understand, which they know, but it's a reminder, refresher, what we'll talk about. And then August 18th, 19th, and 20th are the days we have our in-building meetings when all of our staff come back, and our administrators will go over the same conversation we just had here with the slides. And then also ongoing throughout the year, we have teachers who do curriculum writing, PLC work, administrative meetings, where this will continue to be a conversation throughout to answer questions so that we understand how do we continue to move forward in this direction. So, that is really kind of where we are at as of today. July 12th, looking at what has transpired since May, late June, when the laws were passed, when it was signed into bill, and then the guidance that is coming. And like I said, IASB, talked to them again this morning. They said training is coming. The DE, I had reached out to last week, and I have not heard back from the DE. Still waiting to see what else, what other guidance they'll be providing moving forward as well for us so we can continue to move in this direction in what we need to talk about. So, that's where we are at today. Any questions you have, I'd gladly answer those. Or comments.
Do you anticipate developing a specific protocol for addressing concerns about compliance with House File 802?
In terms of?
If there's a, just if there's a concern that curriculum doesn't comply with House File 802, do you anticipate developing a specific protocol for, like, how's that going to be handled?
Yeah, so anytime we have a conversation comes with our teachers, for example, they bring a concern to us, they sit down with Mike and Sidney, and we sit down and look at, okay, what is being taught? What's the concern? What parameters does it fall within? And that would be a conversation we'd definitely have with our teachers to help them if they have questions going through. In fact, we had that last year in sending out all of our fourth-grade teachers on the topic.
Do you anticipate a being, a curriculum that's been handled previously?
No, I mean, anytime a parent has a concern, they always reach out to the building principal first. That's the first thing to do, or the classroom teacher, to see what's being taught, what the questions are. For example, you take the editorial cartoons, what are the actual questions being asked? Those are good questions to find out as we move forward.
Do you foresee, given our curriculum, and not something that we look at annually and that you guys are always analyzing, but because of the styling and the provisions that it makes, do you see any major changes that we're going to have to make to our curriculum and how we approach, how the programs you would talk in certain subject areas? Or do you think that, you know, from what it sounds like to me, it's more of, most certainly saying that, you know, certain topics can't be taught. It's more just that I'm in playing with a particular individual or, you know, trying to influence someone to have a certain belief without giving that proper discourse so people can develop their own opinions and thoughts. So given that, you know, do you foresee any major changes that we're going to have to make to current?
I think our biggest discussion so far had probably been around assessments, and even the types of questions you're asking kids. Again, if it's an opinion-based, I'm going to take it from a grading standpoint for a second. You know, if you ask someone to give their opinion, that's someone's opinion, so you're not going to grade them on their opinion of what it is. But if you ask someone to say, list me the five, it's an essay question. Give me the five, like, the example in the guidance was, I think it was around... Global warming, exactly, thank you. You know, what are the five main factors of global warming? Students through the learning in the class, those are probably pretty straightforward facts. That would be graded upon. Now, if you ask a student, for example, do you believe in global warming? And they say, "No", and they state their reason, okay, that's a statement. You've asked them to give their opinion, so that's a whole different grading standpoint. And I think that's where we have to be respectful of, okay, what is it we're asking? And anytime, and whether it's controversial issues we had before, or House File 802, it is, how do you make sure, what you just mentioned, we're not making them feel guilty, or, you know, oppressed because of it, or it's because of their fault? And their opinions have to matter. Everybody has their right to their opinion, as you saw in those questions. You may not agree with someone, but let's have a dialogue, respectful dialogue around that. Those are things that we'll continue to go through with our staff.
What does that training look like? Is that more across the board, or is it more targeted? I mean, is it training across the board for all teachers? Or do you kind of?
Yeah, so I think there's two ways, to answer that question. I mean, maybe three, actually, to wrap it up. Number one, this conversation with our admin and with our staff will be very straightforward from building principals just walking through this side by side. That ongoing one, that last bullet of the study where it says PLC curriculum writing, you know how our professional learning communities work. That could be further conversations in those areas where it's for teachers, with administrator, whoever it might be, if it's directly related to that. Now, down the road, you know, as we look at as a district, what does diversity, equity, inclusion training, what might that look like? Those would be conversations we can look at where we might bring in somebody. But again, if we bring in someone that they understand what the guide rails are, and we are helping lead that conversation, what we're looking for from a training standpoint, so that we vet those individuals and know, here's where we are as a district, and here's where we want to go, and here's how we help our staff.
If there's a finding that the curriculum isn't in compliance with House File 802, I know that this, how would that be handled? With a man who can't give a specific, because I guess it would depend upon to what extent it wasn't in compliance with 802, but do you anticipate that that could potentially be a disciplinary issue? Depending upon the nature of the violation?
So let's, I think there's... How you ask that question could be two ways. I think I could take, maybe go a one route first. If it is the curriculum, that's a curriculum. If we feel we need to change something, then that's something that we would address with the teachers in terms of removal or that type of thing. I think the second question you're asking was a consequence. Is that what you were asking? So that's more of a teacher question. And if that's where we feel that there's a situation there, we always address that as a personnel matter and deal with it accordingly by the law of what we need to do. If it's a teacher issue.
Under Chapter 279?
Yes, correct.
So that would be, I mean, it could, I mean, it would be a per, so a violation of House File 802 could potentially be a Chapter 279 issue?
Could be, yes.
I mean, I know it just happens, but.
Yes. So what I'm saying, it might not be the curricular issue in that case, but it's something else. Yes. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does.
How do you think this bill will affect organic discussions that occur? Let's say that you have a topic in history, it's very sensitive, and our students are very perceptive, and they may take these discussions that are very sensitive and take it to another level. How are those going to be handled?
I think the guidance used, like, don't quote me on it, but it's like, robust discussions could occur in a classroom. And those are things that happen. And again, that is part of what is, so, in a classroom setting, when kids start asking kids questions, or they share their point of view, and they get them to think about, well, what about this? Or what about that topic? Those things are very beneficial. And sometimes that, when you're as a classroom teacher, provide it, it's where do you want it to go? You almost stand back for a second, you say, this is pretty neat to watch kids have a conversation around that. And they may not be agreeing, but at least they're sharing their opinion as to what it is. Because that's, I think, when you look at, whether it's as a parent, as a school, you want kids to critically think about what's in front of them. Because when they leave us and they go on to college, or they have a career, or whatever they're doing, they have to be good communicators, good listeners, respectful, and being able to be successful in whatever they do. And that's a skill set, those five things that we have on the left. If we can get to that, those things can happen. As long as you're being respectful to the other opinions, and no one's saying, "You have to agree with me, but I'm listening to you, and I'm sharing my point of view."
That's a very complex topic to teach and roll out. And I think maybe my question might go more to Chris Gary. But there's so much training to have this go into place July 1. In my mind, it feels like there was a lack of collaboration with some pretty big governing or supporting bodies, like IASB, the DE, because we're waiting for all these trainings to roll out to help give us guidance seven weeks before school starts. To kind of keep, I mean, I guess I'm transitioning a little bit, but like, my question is, like, was there collaboration? What was the mindset in trying to get this out so quickly? Or I feel like it was very quick, you know, it came in June 8th, I believe, is when you voted on it. And yet, we still have all this work to do to prepare our teachers to start on August 23rd, and changing curriculum, and it's like, our teachers have been through enough, now we're asking them to reevaluate plans?
I'm going to disagree with you. I'm going to say, if you're doing, your teachers are doing a proper job and a good job, this is immaterial. This, you're already ruined. I can give you an example of a school district in eastern Iowa, where there was this code amongst the faculty employees. Certain employees wore safety pins, and others didn't. I wouldn't have been one to wear a safety pin. Now, my son, who is a major in the army, probably is more conservative in political than I am. How do you think he would have been affected and graded in a classroom if he disagreed with a teacher with a safety pin?
You don't know what the safety pin stands for, so we're not.
They were safe to talk to. Since I'm a conservative Republican, I was considered not, there were teachers in school that were not, were considered not safe to talk to. So with the code, when they got found out, you know, there were certain ones that came to me and said, "This is what's going on." You know, people were, you know, there was this, and so my son probably would have flunked, because he is extremely outspoken, and...
So, and no, I think that goes back to the conversation I was sharing before in terms of what's the expectation of relationships with the students and the teachers in the classroom. I mean, that is what we have to have, is not that type of a situation. Is, how does everyone feel safe with what they can do and the sharing of ideas? And that's the conversation we'll continue to have with our staff on a daily basis moving forward.
I guess you're having, I mean, like I said, my son can, I can keep having a discussion, an open discussion with anybody in here, probably keep up to you. But there are other people that aren't that strong-willed that would sit in a corner and hover, and basically, when it came to filling out the test, went, "Okay, what's going to be the right answer here so that I don't get flunked?" And that's what we got to avoid, is you have a student that is not allowed to be open and have that discussion, and, you know, "I got to do the right thing so I pass here." You know, and that's hurting all of us if you false that, that, you know, that effort and that stigma. That's, I think, most of the time, this, most people will never have, I mean, I remember back when I was in school and the discussions I had, this would have been garbage. I don't ever remember when I couldn't have had a discussion with a teacher and when I wrote an essay or something, and have a, and not be afraid of basically getting a checkmark just because I didn't agree with the teacher. There's some of that going on out there, just like that. There's some of that going on out there, just like that school district. If you didn't have your sa- I mean, if you disagreed with the safety pin issue. I mean, it, it, it's out there. I, I can give you the teachers' names if anybody doesn't believe me.
Any other questions to the board, to Brian?
Well, I would, I would add to that. I mean, in terms of, I mean, this was brewing for a while. I mean, it didn't just start June 8th, so there were multiple subcommittees.
Stuff that led up to it.
Iowa Association of School Boards were involved. I mean, we, we had Zoom, uh, subcommittee meetings that, that were open to the public, that anybody could participate in. The Department of Education was involved in the, in the subcommittee meetings. And there were many amendments. It went back and forth between the House and the Senate a couple times, and it was amended several times. So, I mean, it, there was a, I would call it a robust discussion between the chambers and throughout the session, and we just happened to still be there in June. So, um, we should have been done at the end of August, or April, though we weren't.
And I'm going to say it's not uncommon for legislation to be passed, and then you have to wait for the DE to give their guidance, because they have to understand it. They have to ask the questions. So this is kind of a common protocol. It's just that this is just a more, you know, sensitive topic.
And, and the other thing too, and I think just to Norland, to Norland's point, you know, when my daughter was in high school here, you know, she had a physics teacher and an algebra teacher that didn't like that Donald Trump was our president and that Betsy DeVos was our Secretary of Education. And I don't know why that's coming up in physics and algebra class.
Amen.
You know, so like. So, you know, I think, you know, the last five or six years have just been a very tumultuous political time in society. And when you see that, those politics coming into the classrooms when they shouldn't be there, I think it's just, it's very sensitive. And to Norland's point, if, if we're teaching what we're supposed to be teaching, we can still talk about slavery, we can still talk about Jim Crow laws, we can still talk about, you know, women fighting for the right to vote, and the sexism, and, and all of that stuff. But we just have to make sure that we are mindful on, on how we're treating those discussions and, and not assigning blame based on sex or, or a gender or, or race. So I think, to Norland's point, if we're doing what we're supposed to do, and I think that we can do that, it's just when the politics get into the classroom and kids feel like they can't say something because it's in disagreement. And then, you know, another thing that I think has been an issue too, and this is across the state, I mean, and it's not just in Iowa, is you have people that express themselves on social media. And sometimes when teachers are especially vocal on social media, on one particular political leaning, and then they teach things that are controversial in their classroom, I think that it gives, it gives a lot of concern to parents like me and the people that are here, is that, are those politics coming into the classroom when we're having these controversial conversations? So that, those are, those are what I think led into this, the development of this bill.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Norland.
Well, and to be added, I mean, last year, we weren't even allowed in the classroom, so I had no idea what was going on. You know, I volunteered every day in my third grade classroom, and now I had no idea. And I just found out two weeks ago that my third grader was told about BLM every single day.
Well, again, we're not, it's not open to the public yet. It's not open to the public. It's not open to the public. You'll get your chance in just a minute. We'll come back.
Oh.
Now, and so, anybody else, any questions from the board? To Brian.
Okay, you got it.
No? Okay. Again, now we're opening up to the public. You get three minutes to speak, and after you speak, then you just say this, you're, give us your name, your capacity in the district, and then you get your three minutes, you get it one time, and then we will not be engaging the board. And after everybody's gotten a chance to speak, then we will recap. So, why don't you go first? Dr. Lewis, will you reset the timer?
Sure will. Hello, my name is Zach Olfers. I am parent in the district. I have two sons at Cody. It's nice to see all of you again. I just wanted to be the first one to jump up and start this off, because I can feel where it's going. I just wanted to tell a story, and hopefully it can head home with some of you. 2016, my wife and I were trying to find a new place to live. We were from Davenport previously, moved to Ankeny for two years, and it didn't work out with my, my wife's career. And we had to leave a great district. We had two boys, one that hadn't made it to kindergarten yet, and one was going to be in second grade, first grade. So we had just started in a school district. And Ankeny is great, I'm sure you all know, it's probably one of the ones keeping up with us. We found Pleasant Valley, we wanted it, we knew we were coming back to the Quad Cities. We came to this district. You know, what Representative Moore said was powerful. That's awesome. That made me feel great, that made me remember back when I was thinking about coming to Pleasant Valley, learning about it, studying it, reading about it. There's all these people in here that are upset right now, that probably thought that same thing. Those exact feelings were in their hearts, they, they love PB. I mean, some of them are probably still feeling that and angry at the same time right now. And so I just wanted to express that, and I want to hold us all accountable here, because I also want to say, there's, there's, there's consequences, there is consequences. And to the point of the other, I mean, there was another bill passed, it was not just 802, it was 813. And much like masks, we wanted choice. We want choice in this, and we have choice, and we also have our money, but we can take other places now. So let's remember that, let's be open. I don't want it to get to the point where, a lot of us do feel like the middle finger. I don't want to have that, I don't want it to be that way. I liked the feeling I felt hearing about this gentleman's sons growing up to be awesome people because of the teacher. Now, I know my stepdad is going to take a turn, but let's just remember that that's the consequence. There's money here. We have meetings in a group that I'm a part of, and it comes down to the fact that money makes you guys move in the direction we want you to move. So just, when you listen to everybody else, remember that that's what's at stake here. We have the kids, they're our kids, and we're going to take them where we think is the best for them. Thank you.
I'm Keith Stein, parent in the PB School District. After hearing the word salad, I'm assuming that this is fine in our schools, that we're going to teach racism. This is oppressive, this is racism, I don't care the context of it. I'm sorry, it is racism, racism. My second thought is, I did some looking on elementary school books. There is a school in the elementary school of Rudedale Heights called Not My Idea, a book about whiteness. Inside the book, contract binding you to whiteness. You get stolen land, stolen riches, special favors. Whiteness gets you to mess endlessly with the lives of your friends, neighbors, loved ones, and all fellow humans of color for the purpose of profit. Your soul, sign below. Now, this is elementary school, it's not high school. I don't care what's in the high school. There needs to be diversity in high school. Why is that there? Was school funds spent on that book, or was that something that was donated by a, by a parent? The other thing, it was brought up that kids have got to worry about how they speak in the class, or how they write a paper. My son was a student in this class many, five years ago. He had to change the way he thought to get better grades. That was the discussion in the class. I brought it up two other times at this meeting, where this teacher grades boys different than girls. I didn't hear it from my son, I heard from seven other students over the years. This word salad of protecting teachers over students has got to stop. That's all I have.
Good evening. My name is Padmaja Philutla, and I am personally a parent of two kids who graduated from Pleasant Valley School System, one in 2013 and the other in 2020 during the pandemic year. Professionally, I am a professor of finance at Western Illinois University. So, as you can see, I am brown, and I am a woman. There are some stories I want to share with you, which I really have not shared with, not even some of my friends, which relate to quite a bit of racism. That's been systemic, that's been affecting my life and the teaching discussions we've had without truth, on what they should be doing, they shouldn't be doing, and so on and so forth. So, I'd like to start with some professional experiences I've had, and then I'll come back to my personal experiences that I've had, one that's less than 15 days old. So, I came to join Western Illinois University about two decades ago. Please keep the time, I usually get the podium, and I take it for an hour and 15 minutes, or a two and a half hours, whichever one you want to take it. I walk into the classroom, I start my discussion. A white female gets up in the class, in the middle of a 35 student class, in the middle of the lecture, and goes, this is crap. I don't understand your accent. You guys get it? Do you understand my accent?
Absolutely.
It's not much that's changed since then. Example number two. While I teach finance, if I didn't say that, but I actually also teach investments, which is my area. You got the picture, brown, female, finance, and investment. A graduate student of mine gets a C in his midterm. He is not happy with his grade, but that's what he earned. He comes into my office, 260-pounder white male, snatches the exam from my hand, stomps out of my office, while my policy says you will not be able to take the exam, and it says very clearly in the syllabus, you cannot take it out of my office, runs out of the building with my exam in hand, and I go screaming. Everybody comes out, we shut the door down, he was eventually sent out for violating against the policy. But I realized that he actually carries a gun in his red truck, and I was escorted six months. Every day after I finished my class at 8:30 PM, out of the door, fearing for my life. And my child, the younger one, was three months old. Example number three. I walk out of my lecture, and a white male gets up, walks out with me and says, you are the one that's taking away my job.
He's finished now.
Okay.
Sorry.
15 days ago, 15 days ago, I was thrown a fresh egg when I was on the block. Back, I just have to f off, go back to your own country.
Okay, that's.
So if you think it's not systemic, please think again. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to come up? Yes.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Andre Richards. I am the parent of two PB students, and I just wanted to, I did send some emails to some of you. I again wanted to voice my support for educators, administrators, and the school board. We chose to send our kids to public school because we know public schools have the responsibility to represent all students. We appreciate diversity, and we, as a family, believe that all students should be represented, all voices should be represented. I think this forum is great to have this open discussion and debate, and this is how people learn, this is how people grow. This is how people with different backgrounds learn about other people's stripes. And this is what some people are trying to prohibit. And this is a learning environment, and that is how we all become better educated on each other, listening to other people's stories, stories and backgrounds. So I just wanted to give you my support and say that all schools, public schools, have the obligation to represent all students and listen to everybody's viewpoint. Thank you so much.
Anybody else who wants to contribute support? Yes.
Hi, my name is Jim Orchard. I'm a longtime resident. I moved from California specifically to this school district, as I mentioned two weeks ago. Wonderful school district. Just a indication, when we were in California, one of the most affluent areas, our high school had, the biology classes had microscopes like from the 1930s. Biology class here has electron fluorescence machines that can see the DNA amount. That's the significant difference in the high schools here. Also PB, the best school district in the state. I believe the SAT scores at the last one was 1,300. Just for comparison, the Chicago School District is 900. Okay, so, two weeks ago, I asked you guys to do a little homework to research what CRT, Critical Race Theory, and its root, critical theory. I hope you did that. Recently, in the news, I heard this, that the president of the NEA, the National Educational Association, threatened to sue states that would not, that resisted teaching CRT in their schools. So a question to you legislature, are you aware of that? And are you prepared to defend 802? They also threatened to sue school boards and parents if they resisted, complained about teachers teaching CRT in the classroom. So I hope that you are prepared to, that you understand the issue. The president of AFT, the American Federation of Teachers, said they are not teaching CRT in the grade school or the high school. They are only teaching it at the university level. That is true. My personal research says that CRT has been taught, starting in the law schools in the 1970s, and it migrated into the other social sciences, English, history, et cetera, et cetera, and 20 years ago into the teacher curriculum. So the concern I have is that the teachers may not even realize that they are teaching this. They are literally saying, why are you complaining to me? I'm just teaching what I was taught to teach, if they are young teachers. So my suggestion is, be on the lookout. I want you to maintain and commit to exercise excellence, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Mushmanstein. I'm the stepmother of a recent graduate of PB High School. I'm the stepmother of a stepson that is a coin to be a senior at Iowa State in Civil Engineering, and I'm very proud of him. And the mother of a daughter who's about to be a senior this year, a graduate. She was just admitted to the National Honor Society and can grow with the opportunities that she has had. I am less concerned about the robust discussion among the students and more concerned about teachers inadvertently submitting their opinions. I'm also greatly concerned about, as we talk about mental health, how cartoons like my husband showed affect children. They portray black people as victims, as incapable of, of making it and succeeding. I have emailed you, Mr. Schuys and Mr. Erickson, about a teacher who relayed a story about her friend who was black, who couldn't finish college, and the expectation was that she would. And I was very concerned about that. I want to make sure that we are building all children up positively to their potential and not cutting any children down. I don't understand the mindset of needing to cut some children down in order to build other children's children up. I believe if you're an effective instructor, you can build everyone up, and, and your charter is to teach them to their ultimate potential. I just really hope that they'll be an inspiration. I don't want to take my daughter anywhere else, but I don't want her to be bullied and brutalized, and I don't want her to feel like she's done anything wrong. I'm very, very sorry for the last, the prior speakers. I'm very sorry for the way you're treated, it's unacceptable. But my daughter wouldn't do that, and you can't judge her by those other people's actions. And I hope that she'll be treated fairly, and all students will be treated fairly and valued tremendously.
Hi.
You guys get six minutes since we're two people.
We'll be quick. Hi, we're Lily Dimmitt and Elise Seiderveen, we both go to PB. We're both going to be seniors this upcoming school year, and we actually weren't planning on sharing tonight, but we feel compelled to do so as we seek truth in the midst of a complicated topic, because we actually took American literature last semester when the cartoon was shown.
We both had the teacher where it was shown, and during the class, we had no, none of the topics given before, why we were doing it. We were given the assignment in class and told to complete it, but with knowledge and assumptions of our teachers' political views because of statements made in class, personally, I felt I had to write certain things so I could get a good grade. Personally, I felt I had to write certain things so I could get a good grade.
We actually didn't read the excerpts, and we were confused as this cartoon appeared to push an agenda rather than promote discussion. We were encouraged to hold certain views that we believed our teacher held due to the fact that they presented this cartoon. And we were concerned that if we shared that, our true beliefs, which include that the American dream is advantageous, we worried that we would get a worse grade due to the fact that this was an opinion assignment.
Since we didn't read the book or any excerpts for the assignment, we felt that if we did, we could do it effectively and with an open mind. But not having that, we also didn't have a guided discussion by the teacher. We were told to complete the assignments, like you said, with a peer or by ourselves. And so there was no actual class-guided discussion that stemmed from the assignment.
And we just share this to bring awareness as to what was going on during those classrooms and what we fear may continue to happen. We didn't get instructions regarding that cartoon. We didn't read those excerpts. And we were excerpts, and we were simply told to evaluate with little context otherwise.
And so we just want to bring awareness that American Lit isn't the only class that this happens in. Like other people have stated, political topics come up in probably all of my classes that I've taken, whether it regards to it or not. And so having that happen, with my personal beliefs, I feel like I have to conform to theirs to earn the grade that I should deserve with my own beliefs. Thank you.
And I'm going to follow that because that was my daughter. And I'm proud.
My name is Sylvia Ziderveen. I worked for Pleasant Valley Community School District six years, very proudly so. I am a Spartan. I bleed blue, and I love this district. And that's why I'm here. I'm not here to be a hater. I'm here because I care about the kids like you. I have helped kids in elementary school. I have helped them when they're sick. I've helped kids in the high school trying to decide their identity as they face identity crises. I have been in all of our schools, elementary through high school, and I am passionate for excellence, just like our district is. I love critical thinking, just like we do as a district. And I want to continue to see that grow. I am all about diversity in thought and diversity in opinion, not for some, but for all. And that's where I'm concerned, because the tide that's coming through our district is absolutely share your opinion if you share the opinion of your teacher. If you should, you know what I know about mental health? Our kids are up at two in the morning crying in our arms because they're National Honor Society students, they put thirty-two on their A C T, and they're scared they're going to be in the class because they spoke an opinion that differs from their teacher. That's not okay. I am all about someone saying, you know what? That's your opinion? We have our opinion, liberal, conservative, but I want a model for my child that I love every single person in this room. She should never face that as a teacher, but neither should my daughter, who's a conservative Christian in the classroom. I am all about diversity, not for some, but for all. I love our district. Let's press on and put right, even though it's hard. Let's do it. We deserve the best. We love this district. We want to be the best. I elected Jody because she's the best. I want to continue to see our district be this excellent school that we prize and love and hold so dear. So press on, please stay the course, please stay with excellence, and please stay with unity and strength, not for some, but for all.
Hi, my name is Debbie Winslow. I'm a graduate from P V. My husband and I both graduated from P V. I have four kids that graduated from P V, and I have nine grandkids that'll be in P V. Seven of them are in school, two of them are still little. I can go back to the seventies and tell you that there was teachers that made us feel uncomfortable with political views, all the way back in the seventies. I have my kids that went through, they were in the nineties, same thing, not every teacher. And it is a great school district. I was a cheerleader, my husband was a football player. I love P V. I love blue and gray. I mean, we've been, went through all of our kids' sports. We're going through the grandkids' sports. Love the school. But I have nine grandkids that are going through right now, and I'm, and I think COVID changed things a little bit. I think we got to see a little bit more. I mean, I watch my grandkids, so I got to see a little bit more that was going on, heard a little bit more that was going on. I just want P V to be the best school ever. So I, I think it is.
Hi, I'm Allison Colley. I've got two kids at P V, one going into middle school and one going into eleventh grade. I am concerned when I hear people say that their children aren't allowed to give a different opinion in school, because I think that that's really important. But what I'm going to say now is probably not going to please a lot of people in this room. I think that when you start to tell people what to teach and how to teach it, and what books to read, and what books not to read, it's a slippery slope, and it makes me very uncomfortable. I think it's insane to say that racism does not exist and that it's not part of a systemic and part of our society. I believe the United States is an amazing country, one of the best in the world, but it doesn't mean we're perfect, and it doesn't mean we're right. And I think we have to be very careful that we make sure that people understand both sides to the story. Thank you.
Fred Dodd, taxpayer. My wife and I are in the class of nineteen sixty. And so we were the ones that decided the blue and gray and the Spartans, and if you don't like it, it's our fault. Thing that bothers me, just watching this all happen, is I think people are going to leave here with a great sense of frustration, because there's still a lot of questions not answered that have come up over the last couple of months. And it seems like we should have the right to hear your opinions, see how you feel. I mean, they're going to be elected or reelected. We'd like to know how you feel. So how do we do that? Since we can't get response from you in a meeting like this, do we have to then set up a forum at a neutral location to have this response back and forth? Do we deserve a response?
Well, right now, you know, the bill has already been passed, so we have to follow the, what the bill says. And our job is, is to follow the law and follow what our guidance is from the Department of Education. So we don't really have a choice in this matter because it's already been decided.
Well, there's, that's a guideline. That's a guideline. We accept elect a school board to decide for this area what the thinking should be. One of the guidelines.
I would say all the information that is being shared tonight, we'll take notes on this, we'll take it back, and it'll be part of our conversations that we have to make sure, as you said, moving forward, what does this look like for us? How do we make sure that we're following what needs to be followed? And we set that up with our staff to make sure that that is happening, sir. And that is what we will continue to do.
Okay. And I have a question for lawmakers. Anything come up about cameras in the classroom for next year?
It wasn't brought up this year. I've read about it just recently.
But it's not in the.
We don't go back to session until January, so if that's something we want to consider, it's something we can talk about in our fall caucuses.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Allison Leah, and I have two children in this school district, one in elementary school, one going to be a senior in high school. I have no intention of speaking tonight, but I just want to share with you, I mean, overall, obviously, this school is an amazing school, amazing district. I love the commitment to excellence, support and applaud diversity. I don't think anyone in this room is arguing any controversy over diversity or welcoming of all people of different, not sexual orientation as well, as ethnicity, beliefs, everything. But what I'm bringing up too is, I know my son who's a senior, I really started noticing it from seventh grade on, he would come home so frustrated. It was primarily in the social studies-type classrooms where it was definitely a one-sided belief system with the thought and teachers giving more of the opinions. And instead of a diversity of discussion or an open thought, I know my son would come home frustrated. And at that point, they're young, they're learning, and he, he's not going to argue back, he's going to listen for years. He just never spoke in any of his classes because he never felt safe to speak in his classes, in those class, in those classroom environments, more in the social studies areas. And he has had a class a couple of years ago where the teacher has had students raise their hand whether or not they, and separate on either side of the room, if they had one political belief versus another, and it was happening. And he would come home fuming to me, but he just kept his mouth shut and just answered exactly how he thought the teacher would want to hear answers, and that's how he answered everything, just to go ahead and get the A in the class. And I've never said a word for five or six years about it. He never wanted to make an issue of it and just did what he needed to do to earn his A and move on to the next class. However, in one of my prior careers, I was a high school teacher. I was a high school math and business teacher. And one thing I have done in the business classes, since it was more appropriate to have all the discussions and politics came in the, in the discussion a lot in business classrooms, at the end of a semester, I would always ask the teachers to raise their hand if they thought I was Democrat or Republican. Every year, it was very neutral. No one had a clue what position I had. That is the commitment to excellence for a teacher. A teacher should be developing critical thinking for their children, their classroom. Every teacher should be ensuring there's critical thinking. I don't want my kids necessarily to know what their teacher believes. It's not the position of a teacher to tell their students what they believe. It's the position the teacher to open up the thought, let them think. Then that creates a safe space for the children to feel comfortable discussing their opinion. Then they know, they don't have to know what the teacher thinks and will feel safe and comfortable writing or grading or whatever they want. That's the role of the teacher.
My name is Juliette Menard, and I'm a parent. And I've written my thoughts down so I don't get off on a tangent. So I'd like to address the board and our legislators as well. The larger problem cannot be fixed by schools alone. If it's a language, if it's language that you're fearful of trying to cover up larger problems that you're not okay with, you're not okay with certain populations being oppressed by, by any, any group of people, right? Good, that means that you're human. But rather than using school policy to wash it out because you think your children are too impressionable, you can do two things. Number one, address oppression, segregation, and discrimination. And I will say I was impressed with some of the tax things that you spoke about, childcare and things like that. I appreciate that. Increase the minimum wage, make generous family leave policies, broader access to healthcare, reduce mass incarceration, and make immigration more humane. Number two, trust your children. Children are intuitive and caring. They are capable of having hard, mature conversations about unfortunate topics, and they're committed to making the world a better place. So give them a safe space to learn and consider how they might contribute to make the world a more peaceful place in a more ethical way. Educators use diversity and inclusion woven into lessons in all subject matters because it enhances the story. It brings meaning. I didn't send my children to P V schools for their brains to be filled like a bucket with a monolithic perspective. I send them for teachers to ignite their curiosity and for fellow students to share their unique stories and approach lessons with critical thinking, exploring context and point of view, that they would grow a sense of agency, practice using their individual unique voices, and develop into independent and responsible young adults. In order to maintain our high reputation, this is the environment we must continue to foster. In order to meet the needs of our students, we need to create a space where they learn about everyone's experience, not just their own. Different races, ethnicities, genders, and ages bring different perspectives and realities to every situation. It is essential that we celebrate that and ensure that legislators, administrators, board members, teachers, coaches, and students practice a mindset of inclusion. It is unfortunate that state law would seek to hinder that. The comment was made earlier. He called the law garbage, or it was a mute point, or something that, I don't remember the exact language. But I guess my question is, why did we spend so much time and money on that if we didn't need it? That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Seamer. I am a parent of two kiddos in the district. And I'm also a kindergarten teacher here. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Pleasant View, but I have taught in the district for the past sixteen years, so I've taught elsewhere. And my husband actually teaches at Bridgeview. So we're, we're definitely a P V family. I guess first I want to express appreciation for all that you've done this past school year to make school equitable and accessible to P V students. I know that it hasn't been easy. I've watched many of the board meetings virtually, and each time I watch, I appreciate you all more and more. I'm speaking today to ask for any and all continued support of all P V students by voting yes in any way that, in any way, shape, or form it comes up to support diversity, equity, and inclusion. I can imagine that the divisive political climate has made your job more stressful, and I find that very unfortunate. We appreciate what you do. And I know that what you want is the best for all students. And I think that's what all P V admin and teachers do as well. And I'm going to change course a little bit. I just feel the need just to say that my experience, I know I speak, my kiddo, my oldest is going into junior high, so I don't have any experience at high school level yet, and I can't speak to that. But I can tell you what it's like in, at Pleasant View. I can tell you what it's like at Cody, and what it's like at Bridgeview. I don't know my colleagues' political beliefs. It's not something we speak about in the teacher's lounge. We don't wear those pins here at Pleasant, Pleasant Valley. We don't do that. It's considered unethical for us to talk about our political beliefs with our kids. You know, it's not, it's not considered, it's not something we talk about and, you know, try to push on kids. It's really not. I sit through lots of meetings with teachers, you know, and I, I see their cars before school, after school, well before eight o'clock, well after four o'clock, on weekends, pouring their hearts and souls into what your kids are learning and what, what they're doing every day. You know, my husband and I are both teachers. It's our life. And I would say that of all my coworkers as well. It saddens me to hear some of the things I'm hearing. And again, I'm not going to address any specific concerns, or, you know, those are individual things that have happened. But as a whole, P V is a wonderful place, and I'm so happy my kiddos go here. I'm happy that I teach here. I hope nothing changes in terms of the freedom we have to teach our kids to be respectful citizens. I do hope, though, for the sake of, of all our students, because again, not for some, but for all, that as we have the opportunity to learn more and be better in terms of respecting diversity and inclusion and equity, I hope that those are initiatives that you will thoughtfully consider and adopt in the future. So thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Arun Vilidla. I'm also, I have two children, two kids that are in this school district, and also live here in the Pleasant Valley area. So I just wanted to say a couple of things based on Mr. Schuess, who put together this presentation. I just want to say you're on the right track in making sure that the teachers have the kind of a perspective, the context, the training that is needed so they can do it. Second, I also want to say to the teacher who just spoke before me that, you know, that's what I expect the teachers to do here, and I have seen by and large teachers doing that in this school district, which is to encourage that kind of a discussion in the classroom and not necessarily push their views on the, on the, on the children. So to the parents that are assembled here, I also have a couple of points. You know, it's a classroom, and I'm an educator myself. And I know, I'm not sure if anybody can explain which way I go based on what I do in the classroom, whether I am leaning conservative or Democratic or the center or no party, I don't know, you know, whatever. So the point here is, often, the teachers have a job, and those that are trained and are booked in the system to be teachers, they come with a perspective of pushing the students to, so that they learn. So there is a little bit of instruction there, but I'll. So there is a little bit of instruction there, but also there is a learning that is to be produced in the students. So in that process, that process is pretty dynamic. It is going on. There are children in the classroom, and so they have a tough job. I mean, you need to understand how that goes on. Now, I want you to think about that. On the one hand, as 802 has captured some of those points here, you need to have those discussions, and only then the students will develop and get those outcomes that we're intending for them. And on the other side, the teachers, the instructor has to push them a little bit so they get on that path of learning. So it's a pretty dynamic process. So anybody who has managed that process for any length of time knows that it is, you know, you evolve, you change, you develop, and you get better at it. So I want you, I want the parents that are assembled here need to understand, you know, that they need to have a little bit more liberty, give some more liberty to our teachers who made this particular school such a strong school that it is. You know, we talk about excellence. We talk about being the number one school, and that comes primarily from the teachers and the academic content and so on. So give them the benefit of the doubt. And also, I have some message for the political leadership. You know, take a look at the 802 that you passed. See if you can improve it. See that it gets better. It is not something that you would do it once and be done with. So I just thought, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sal Dula. I'm a person who's been in the district for 20 years. I have three children that have either gone through the district or are current students in the district. First of all, you guys have had a very tough year, not just the board, but the teachers and the administrators with the way the pandemic rules changed. And I appreciate all that you've done. The reason I'm here today is to just basically voice support and point of view. I've tried to understand this 802 rule. I'm not sure what problem it was trying to solve. The Department of Education guidance before this seemed to cover a lot of things that it sounds like it's trying to address. You have to provide a balanced viewpoint on both sides. You have to let kids have a point of view that's their own, not necessarily hammered and doomed by their teacher. And you have to create a safe space to discuss things if people have opinions. The 802 rule kind of says many of those things, but because it's a new rule and there's so much hype around it, I think people are going to interpret parts of it very, I don't know, I don't want to say draconianly, but in a very prohibitive way. For example, if I teach something that makes somebody feel bad, I can't do that. Well, unfortunately, our country has had a long history of good things and bad things. Those bad things have led to better things. But you have to have a basis in fact. For example, we as a country did drive Native Americans off their lands. We changed the rules after we made one contract with them to another contract. Those facts need to be taught. If that makes my kids feel uncomfortable as Americans, I'm sorry, life is uncomfortable. You need to know these things so you understand how you can not make bad decisions in the future, how someone may feel that way. So I want teachers to have the freedom to actually express facts. And if this law is going to be misconstrued or used in a way to stifle any discussion, any skepticism in the classroom, I think we're doing a disservice to our kids. And although it's a law that they've already passed, if there's any way that you can voice this as a concern and get some sort of amendment or something to give teachers in the district freedom to choose to explain the facts, give points of view, so that our kids can make decisions in the future that are sane and based on critical thinking, that would be great. Finally, people also...
Jimmy, you're here in time, stuff.
Sorry.
Anybody else who wants to address the board on this?
One more.
Yeah.
My name is Jessica Hising, and I have two boys that attend Cody. And I'll just make this really quick. I wasn't going to speak. I would like to thank all of you guys for what you do. And this last year has been excruciating for everyone. So I do appreciate the extra that everyone's had to put in. We've all heard it here tonight from the source, which is the two girls that came up here and spoke very bravely. The things that we think or say that are not happening, they are happening. To what frequency or what degree, I don't know, but they are happening. This is our red flag. This is why we need House File 802, is because these things are happening. There is this trickle down that is happening. I have no issue, and I am assuming that the majority of people in this room have no issue with the teaching of fact, with history, that it being factual, the good, the bad, and the ugly, all of it. But rather, it's the framework in which it's taught and the bias that is infused in it that is the problem. So that's, I'm just going to leave it at that so I don't completely run over my time. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Sana Sheel, PB parent. And I had an actual speech prepared, but then after listening to everyone, what I want to say has changed. And so when I first came into this meeting, I was scared to death that we were in a school district that didn't value diversity and inclusion and teaching the facts. And from what I've heard from everyone, regardless of what side you're on, everyone wants that. And that, to me, is such a starting point. And when we talk about those robust discussions in the classroom, we need that with parents. And I love it that our kids have that chance to learn how to do that in the school. I feel like maybe our generation didn't get that as much, so we have a harder time talking to each other about things that we don't agree upon. So I just want to say, I think we all need to celebrate that, that we are a PB district that all believe in that. The other thing I just want to mention is I have two students in PB, junior high and high school, and we have had all great experience with teachers. So it's not every teacher. There are fantastic teachers at PB. And I do worry about the stress of something like this bill puts on them. We're talking about there's a teacher shortage now. What is going to happen when we put stress when our parents sit in the back of classrooms and every sentence is said? We have some fantastic teachers, and I assume we need to be really careful. If we already have a shortage, we're right by a border, and they have a shortage too. So where are you going to go if you're constantly barraged by negative and negativity? So I also want to thank the board. I think the last 18 months, you have had an incredibly hard job. You followed the facts. You've listened to science. You've listened to the experts. And then when it became law, you immediately did what you had to do. So I want all of us to keep support of the board. Know that they really have, or you guys have our students' best interests. I know you're going to follow this law, and your nonpartisan board that's really here to support all of us. So thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Anybody else? Okay, I think we have everybody then who has said something. So now, are there any thing that the legislators want to say after you've heard what everybody has said here?
I'd like to give a little background of where House File 802 came from. And I want to thank everybody who's here tonight. This came up in the legislative session. Chris might have addressed some of this. But we had a number of parents, not from Pleasant Valley. This law wasn't addressed because of Pleasant Valley. There were a number of parents from around the state and other school districts who contacted their legislators who had a problem with curriculum that was being taught in those schools. Those 10 points that are included in the law are a direct response to things that, as we reviewed curriculum, that were being taught in some school districts that we didn't want taught in the school districts. It's really not that difficult. The Iowa, and this is very important to the Iowa Legislature, we want facts taught. We want history taught. I'm a history major, an education history major. We want history taught. But we don't want taught is that a race of people is all racist and oppressors, and a different race is all being oppressed. World War II was fought over this. Do we accept the fact today that all Jewish people are bad? No. We fought a world war over that. Do we accept the fact that all Germans are racist against the Jewish people? No. That's the issue with House File 802. We don't want kids being taught that certain races are inherently totally racist or sexist. Yes. And I had a discussion with Brian and Dr. Wadley about this. Individuals are racist. Yes. Individuals are sexist. Yes. Another one that was taught was that capitalism is the most racist economic system there is. No. In my mind, it's the way for people on the lower economic level to get out of their oppression. That's what House File 802 is all about. It wasn't because of what Pleasant Valley's doing. It's what a number of parents around the state of Iowa told their legislators that was going on in their schools, and that's where it came from. And that's why those 10 points in the law are there, because those are things, as we reviewed the curriculum, that we thought, oh, no, we're not accepting this. And it's been very good for me to hear all of you, and I appreciate hearing from all of you. You already know what I think of Pleasant Valley School District. It's top notch. I'm going to keep it that way. And I don't want us to do what's happening in those other districts. I'm not saying it is. But we make laws. We make it for the whole state of Iowa. And so I'm very happy with that we passed House File 802. And I got to tell you, the legislature isn't going to forget about this law, because if it doesn't work, we'll probably do something to strengthen it next year. This is important to us. So that's a little history of where it came from.
That's going to be hard to follow. You know, when this first came up, I'm on the Education Committee, and when this first came up back in, I think, February, I was like, do we seriously need this law? Like, is this seriously a problem? And apparently it is, you know, not in Pleasant Valley, but it has happened across the state, and we needed to address it. So I did hear some concerns, especially from the young ladies, that there's things going on in the classrooms that I think as a board and as a district you can handle. I don't think that's our job to handle that. But I think that I, you know, I saw you listing, and I saw you taking notes, and I think that it's something that you can address. I wanted to bring up a couple of things. Something that when I was on the board that I was very proud of was when we won, Riverdale Heights won the award three years in a row. Help me with the name of that award, Mike.
Breaking barriers.
What was it?
Breaking barriers.
Breaking barriers. And it had to do with closing the achievement gap for minority students. And when you went to Des Moines to receive the award, they asked, I think it was Mike Zimmer, what are you doing for those minority students to raise their grades up and help with those test scores and close those achievement gaps? And he said absolutely nothing. We treat every single student in our district as someone who, as unique individuals, and we do our very best to raise all of our students up. It doesn't have anything to do with their skin color. And I was so proud at that moment to be part of this district. Another situation I wanted to bring up was I have twin boys that are going to be freshmen next year. And when they were in kindergarten, Mrs. Miller was a kindergarten teacher at Cody Elementary School for 34 years. And it was, let's see, it would have been right after 2009 when Iowa legalized gay marriage. And there was a robust conversation at the sand table going on. And Mrs. Miller saw that there was a robust conversation going on, so she kind of made her way over there to see what the conversation was about. And there was a conversation about whether or not a man could marry a man or a woman could marry a woman. And my son Tanner said, well, my Aunt Leslie's married to my Aunt Lisa. And there was a conversation. And she said, well, you know, there is a law in Iowa, and it is legal. Gay marriage is legal in Iowa. And they were all like, okay. And then she changed centers, and they went on and did something else. And she called me afterwards to explain that situation to me. And she said, I'm a public school teacher. The children were having a robust debate, and I simply stated that what the law in the state of Iowa was. And that's all she did. She didn't push one way or the other. She was completely neutral on it. She stated the facts, and they moved on, and everybody seemed okay and had their conversation. But, so I was very proud of those moments. And I think that those are the types of moments when there are these controversial topics that come up. The students should be able to have these open conversations and safe conversations, and the teacher's there to guide them and kind of help with facts and help with these experiences. But to Gary's point, we absolutely need to learn history, and we need to learn from, you know, that we're not perfect, and that we must always continue to, you know, refine in what we're doing as a society. And I think, you know, while this law wasn't written for Pleasant Valley, it was written for all the students of Iowa, and we have to, we have to do better. And we have to make these places, places where kids can develop their critical thoughts. And I just think, you know, again, you're going to go back, you're going to, you're going to have webinars, you're going to have more guidance from the Department of Ed, you're going to have a lot of opportunity to ask questions as you go through your professional development. We hope that you come to us with concerns saying, hey, this isn't working. We're going to have to look at this next year in the legislature. And I know that Gary and Senator Smith and Representative Momsen and I are all open to conversations on what we can do better to continually evolve the quality of the education that we offer all our students. So again, thank you for all we do. I just, I love the conversation here. Everyone that spoke up, I can tell you all deeply care about the students, and you're a very involved community. And we are so lucky that our kids go to school here. So feel free to reach out to us and continue to stay engaged and continue the conversation, because we're a team here. We all have to work together and continue to move forward. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone again for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts, reflections, and feelings. There's one thing I would say for this is that as a district, we know we're not perfect. We are never at the top. We can always get better. If you don't learn, you don't understand that. And I think that's where we are moving forward. We've heard everything you've said tonight. We'll continue to look through this. And we can improve in some areas, and we'll continue to move forward in that because it's right for your kids. So we will keep doing that, and I thank you for coming out tonight.
I want to remind everyone our future dates on Monday, August 9th, is our regular board meeting at 6:00. And then August 23rd is our regular board meeting as well at 6:00.
The meeting's not over yet, so...
That's okay. Just take it outside the hallway.
So we have the meeting on Monday, August 9th, and then on Monday, August 23rd, both at 6:00 p.m. If you have not RSVP'd yet to Deb Damon on the New Teacher Breakfast, please let her know. That is on Wednesday, August 11th, correct?
Yeah.
And it's at...
Again, sorry, if you don't mind, could you just step out so we can finish our meeting? Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
So if you want to go to the New Teacher Breakfast, it's August 11th at 7:30, 7:00 in the morning at the, it's usually at Children's Museum. So that's where it usually is with these RSVPs.
It's 7:30, 59.
Right. And then that's really about it. I have a question, Brian. On the, the IASB's going to come up with a webinar or something on this?
So that was a conversation they shared this morning. We were talking about House File 802 and some other board policies. And she just asked what we were as a district, what we're seeing. She said they're trying to gather information right now from schools across the state to put together what a training session might look like around 802. And that was really, she was very, I think she was very neutral on that, but that's something they're looking at trying to do.
Okay, so that's something that maybe we can learn some more about if board members are allowed to maybe be president of an honor. We could, if we could give the date of that, that would be great.
Yeah.
If it's available to us. If it's available to us.
Once we get guidance, somehow it works. I do think it would be good for transparency to get that out there in E-News or even cover it as an agenda item, so the public knows how maybe we've been asked about how to do it, and now we have direction. I don't want any issue like, well, the law changing, you know, let's just put it on the agenda or do something so that it's out there and it's been disseminated as to how to get something on the agenda once we have that.
Because we're still a little bit unclear as to, like, the signatures, how many signatures you need depending upon... Yes.
They may need to work on what our last election was, the percentage versus 500. Yes, yes. We see the numbers. I mean, we'll give you most of it.
If it was especially the election that we had to do for Catherine.
Right, right. So, with that clarification, is it a November board meeting? Was it a election or the March one, we had the regular purpose statement? Those would be two different numbers.
Okay.
So, we'll get, we'll get it.
Yep. Anything else for the good order?
Yes, it'll be Wednesday, August 2018. Yeah, so that morning we'll have an audit run, and it'll be held in the high school gymnasium this year because we're just too big for the theater and the lore.
That's good.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think 10 o'clock. So, we'll keep it very short. So, we'll see you in the bleachers. Yes.
Anything else for the good order?
He means, he's given me two hours to speak.
Oh, okay, got it. And you have some training to do that, do you guys ever need training to, like, you know, what all the teachers have to do with regards to, like, bloodborne pathogens and stuff like that?
We actually changed that last year because of COVID to, they did it online. And we may do the same thing again this year to save time versus all having to watch it together. Yeah.
You have 17 25th anniversary gifts to hand out.
That's awesome. That is the cool thing about...
All right, well, thank you all. I know this is long, but thank you all for your patience and, you know, hearing what everybody had to say. We will see you in August. So, enjoy the rest of your July.
August 9th?
Yes. Anything else?
You know, I want to say just a reminder, August 15th is our Forest Grove Open House dedication at 4:15. August 15th, 4:15. Like, yeah, 4:15.
It's a Sunday, right?
It's a Sunday afternoon, yes.
And this will be open in public?
It'll be open in public. The information will be coming out of E-News here real soon. We haven't had a meeting with the city today. They would also like maybe do a joint dedication, open house with the tennis courts and pickleball courts. Thank you.
4:15 p.m., all right?
Yes, sir.
True, you're right.
Yeah, invitations are coming up.
I...
Present.
August 14th, you said?
August 15th.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. All right. Is there going to be any, it's just, when it's coming to tourists, there are going to be a little...
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll start out with a recognition. I'll say a few words, then I'll turn over to Chris Welch to say a few words. We'll have a student from every grade to cut the ribbon. We'll have all representatives from the city, from the board, like Decker Plain, the mayor will be there. Any of you that are there, pass, we invite all of our past administrators to be there. And when that's kind of all done, we will go outside and we'll do a flag raising. We'll have a boy scout, a girl scout, the American Legion will be there to raise the flag. And then when that's kind of the conclusion of it, then people can go back in and do a tour and just walk around the building.
Wonderful. And how will that be advertised besides E-News?
So, it'll be E-News. We have some announcements coming up, and then we'll put in our board minutes and do all those things too.
Okay.
Yeah. I think Chris Welch may have sent an E-News already.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay.
We leave on Sunday, the 24th. Come back the 31st. Sunday or Saturday.